I will call tonight's meeting to order. Hope everyone can hear me. I will start out by talking about meeting logistics. Anyone joining remotely, please change your name, your display to show your first and last name. Anyone who wishes to speak, please start by stating your name and where you live. We ask everyone keep your comments and questions to three minutes. If you're speaking about a specific agenda item, we ask you to keep your comments germane to that item. Anyone who wishes to speak must be called on by the mayor. And again, at any point in the meeting, we will ask people to keep their comments to the council to three minutes or less. Moving on, we have a request to approve the agenda. And council members will be aware that I sent an email earlier about adding an item. I hope that that's acceptable to take it up under other business. Hearing no other changes, we will consider the meeting or the agenda approved. Now we'll start with general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. And we will, as with other parts of the agenda, ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. Oh, and I should say, we have, for the first time tonight, Kelly and I sat down to set target timelines for items on the agenda. I don't know whether, how well that will go. That's our best estimates for all these items. If anyone has any comments or suggested changes before we start, happy to hear them. Carrie?
I think most of them are, or a number of them are really way too short. Like 30 minutes for the Elks Club, I think is much less time than we're actually going to need. 30 minutes for the East State Street is probably less than we're actually going to need. So I'm definitely concerned looking at this agenda about our ability to get through it all before it becomes Thursday. So...
Yeah, there's a lot. So let's see what we can do to hold to reasonable timelines. All right. General business and appearances. Is anyone in the room who wishes to be recognized? Steve?
Yes, Steve. Steve Wiger. I would note that the agendas that are out here have no times on them. And I think the public who's most affected by compressed timelines, even your three or four-minute timelines over time, and had actually gone to jail for it. It's inappropriate to set timelines that aren't on an agenda, haven't been discussed, and weren't discussed, or even announced to the public until after you approve the agenda. So just as a matter of due process, Mr. Mayor. The noise interruptions with Minnesota shouldn't come out of my time. I have raised again and again that it was the city's demolition of M&amp;M to create the bike path, which created a situation where there is no redemption center this side of Berry. And most of the folks who rely on redeemables for their, you know, daily, some of their food and beverage, can't, don't have vehicles and can't get to Berry. So I donated some bottles that could only be returned at Yankee Spirits and walked in there with him. He's an African-American schizophrenic homeless person. And they just said, "We don't take, we don't take returnables." And the law requires them to take returnables, but the city has done nothing since demolishing M&amp;M to make our merchants aware that everything they sell, they have to take back and pay the deposits back. So I've engaged with environmental conservation, and they've notified Shaw's that if, when they don't have their machines in working order, they have to estimate or count what they bring in and hand them cash and just store them in the store until they get their machines working. But I believe it's, the council, having been active participating in putting our only redemption center out of business, has some obligation and some responsibility to educate the merchants. Because I've gone around town and looked, asked, "Do you have exemption certificates?" No. No one in town. I finally found it's easier to ask DEC who issues them. And they said, "No, we've never issued an exemption certificate in Montpelier." So the fact that we now have many, many more people out on the street, you know, we could look at it as a green up opportunity, but not if there's nowhere to redeem them. So I would ask you to get serious about that and, yeah, take responsibility for the situation you created.
Thank you, Steve. I will point out that as a point of fact, the owners of that business had the opportunity to rebuild and chose not to. And that's why we don't have the center. It's a private business decision, not a decision of the city government. Anyone else who wish to be recognized? I don't see anybody in the room who's to be recognized. If anyone online...
Is this for, this is not on the agenda or anything?
Yes, this is general business for items not on the agenda. If you're online, the best way to make yourself known is by operating your electronic hand-raising function, but we'll try to keep your eye, our eye open. All right. We will move to the consent agenda. And there is a request to take the event and street closures off the agenda, so we'll do that. And with that, we move from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to...
If I can jump in really quick. We got a very time-sensitive, last-minute liquor license request from Positive Pie. So since it wasn't warranted, it would be appropriate to vote to include it on the consent agenda before voting on the consent agenda.
Okay.
If someone wanted to move that.
What was the last thing you said?
If someone wanted to move that.
Is there a second? Okay. Okay. Now that adds one item to the...
Assuming it passes.
Liquor and tobacco licenses. Now is there a motion to approve...
That would need to pass first.
Okay, thank you. Is there, all those in favor of adding that item to the consent agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Is there now a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The consent agenda is approved, except for item E. And I assume that, Ben, when did you want to take item E up?
Whenever. I'm happy to take it now if that's appropriate.
Okay, sure.
Thanks. I, you know, I just wanted to think about the street closures in, within the context of a previous conversation that we had about setting a street closure policy and whether or not we were going to start charging for street closures. And, you know, I recognize that we currently have the ability to do that, but I felt like we were having a pretty rich conversation about that policy and that, you know, I actually went back and watched it. And we all asked for more input, for the opportunity to provide public input before we started, before we kind of like changed our practice. And so, you know, in that case, I was surprised, I mean, I shouldn't have been surprised because I saw, like, we approved, for example, the All Species Day, that nine officers were required to help provide public safety. And I appreciate that and not second-guessing that decision, but I didn't recognize the cost that was associated with that. And, you know, in our initial conversation, I specifically raised All Species Day as an example of a signature Montpelier event that's important to our community and our identity. And to see, you know, what, it's a pretty, you know, it's an expensive thing. And to do it so soon before the event, I feel creates a good partnership. And so I think that there's just more work to do on the decision to charge for street closure or police presence in overtime, recognizing it's a real expense to our city and we need to find a way to pay for it. I think we just need to pause until we get that input and continue the conversation that we started before we actually start charging. And I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if that's a motion I should make or warrant further discussion or if I just needed to say that.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm looking at the item that's on the, does anyone else have any comments while I'm, Carrie?
Yeah, I think this, this is an important conversation. It might be better to have it in the item where they're asking for a waiver, because I think that's what, that's what we're left with right now. That's our option right now is to do a waiver. But we do need to have a bigger conversation about the difference between the ordinance and the policy and what we're going to change when and the confusion that's been around that. We could, we could do it now, but I think it's a bigger conversation that is just about the consent agenda.
Sorry. I just didn't, I didn't want to approve street closures on the consent agenda if it was going to incur additional costs to the people holding those events, which is why I was bringing it up now. Happy to defer it to later time, but just, I felt like they were related.
And Kelly, do these have, all have fees associated with the presence?
So the fees associated would be identified in each of the individual permits based on the review by staff. So it's variable depending on the particular event.
When I was reviewing these, I could be mistaken, because, but looks like in the permits, they identified the number of staff, but I don't remember seeing a cost associated. Did I miss something? I just want to make sure I'm, there's a lot of information to go through.
If I can. So depending on the permit, we do do estimates. And so I'm trying to talk about just the consent agenda items here, but, you know, in reference to the later agenda item with All Species Day. But per the ones that are currently in the agenda under the event street closures, there are not estimates with those. If there were a cost associated with that event, there would be a note from that department, sort of identifying what the need would be. And then we would work up the estimate once it was approved.
I think we definitely need to have a conversation, because I don't, like, just what Carrie was saying. When we talked about the All Species Day, we approved it, knowing that there was nine officers, but I didn't approve a $4,000 fee. So I think the process just needs to be a little clearer. And that's what we talked about in terms of having the public hearing, going through this process, and being very clear about what we're approving, how much it costs. And I think it's important for the people that are submitting these permits to have a heads up, right? So I just don't think it's fair to just, you know, say, "Okay, now it's going to cost you $4,000," when it hasn't for the past 29 years. And all these other, you know, events have been an institution to Montpelier. And what we talked about last time, I also went back and watched the video, these are our economic drivers. It's a risk, I think, to not get their input, provide guidance, provide awareness, provide them with a timeline before we start, you know, giving these fees that we haven't done in the past. So I don't know how we want to have that conversation, but I think it applies to all of these in terms of a fee that will be associated with them. And, you know, if we agree to waive the fees until we have a public hearing, until we update the policy or the ordinance and have, until we have a clear process, you know, I'd like to, you know, make sure we have that conversation tonight.
Carrie?
When I looked at all of these permits tonight that were on the agenda, I thought that we were being consistent in, in charging for All Species Day and for the toy run, the toy ride, the motorcycles, because those are both parades. And our ordinance specifically says that for parades, the police chief can grant a permit, actually doesn't need to go through city council. So we're not being super consistent with our own ordinances, but that we can ask for, for those costs. I don't think it's a great idea for us to suddenly start asking for those costs when we haven't been doing that in the past, when it hasn't been our policy. And I'm also realizing that I had assumed that when we see this permit that's got the notes from the staff saying it's going to take this many police officers and that we paid by applicant, I thought that the applicant had, would have seen this before we did. So I didn't know that we were approving something that says applicant will cover the cost without the applicant knowing that they were going to have to do that. So I'm not, I'm not pleased with that.
Does anyone have a suggestion? One, one thought we could do, that we could pursue is that of the items that we have on the agenda right, on the list right now, one of them is coming up in June. And it's really pretty short notice. The other two, we're looking at August and September. And goes, if we go through the process of adopting a policy and charging, then we would have the opportunity to do that well in advance of those, of those events. What, what might work for people, I'm just throwing it out, is agree, approve the June 7th city stampede tonight without, without a fee. And hold the other two open to see what we do on adopting a policy. That work for people?
Yes.
Yeah.
If this proposal were submitted before a specific deadline, I think they should be waived too. Because why are we holding them if they sent the proposal before we are approving a change? So we cannot punish them, right? Because they already, we should have a deadline. Okay, after this date, if we receive proposal, it will be evaluated by the change in the policy or something.
I agree with that. I just feel like we shouldn't, you know, we, we should have a conversation about the policy before we start charging people. I mean, that's really what we said we were going to do in our, in our meeting when we first discussed it, is that we were going to get information, we were going to get input from the public, and we were going to have a conversation about it and make a decision. And, you know, I don't think we've done that yet. And I don't think we should charge for events until we do that.
So first off, is your motion then to approve the items on the consent agenda without charging a fee?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Steve?
Yeah, I noticed, Steve Wiger again, I noticed the prior meeting that several street closure things had large sums of money attached to them that, and I'm questioning on what authority are Public Works and police charging these folks? And is the council unaware of it? I don't think anybody scrutinizes these things, you know, to realize. And I think that whatever decision you make should apply retroactively to any pending street closure applications. And I also had heard a year or two ago that we, city was no longer going to serve no trespass notices because it, they were going to...
Well, that's not...
No. Whether, if they're charging unauthorized fees and piggybanking it, it is an issue for council.
It's, it's not part of this discussion, though.
Okay. Well, I would ask you to phrase your motion in a way that accounts for all unauthorized fees, all revenues that are being collected informally by the police department and public works, and get that into visibility.
Okay, we've got a motion before us. Are we ready for that vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. We adopted that. Folks, do we want to move right to the special event, event permit for All Species Day? All right. The request is to waive the fee that they've been notified for All Species Day. Is there a motion?
One motion. I'll make the motion.
Yeah, that's to waive the fee. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The fee is waived for All Species Day this year, so anyone who came here to talk about it, you, you don't have to say if you don't want to. Sound?
Will it be a time to set a meeting for policy discussion?
We'll, we'll put it on the, on the agenda. Yep. All right. That bring, getting back into order for item six, appointment to the youth committee. We have one applicant to be added to the youth committee, Skylar Barnard. Is Skylar here by any chance? Either in person or online?
She's at the Elks Grill, so maybe...
Oh, probably out of town.
Yeah, she was, she might be.
Okay. He is here?
No, he's out of town.
Okay. All right. Does somebody want to make a motion to appoint Skylar Barnard to the youth committee?
I'd, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay.
I'd make a motion, we appoint Skylar Barnard to the youth committee.
Sounds like it's somebody you know?
I do. He's a wonderful young man.
Already, already busy doing stuff for the city, so it's...
He has, he serves the page, he's done a lot of stuff, blood, blood recovery stuff. Good kidding.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have this estimated for 30 minutes. We're already running a little ahead, so that's good, but... Evening, Chief.
Derek Libby, Fire Chief. Here before you tonight, seeking adoption of the Local Emergency Management Plan for 2025, known this year as MAPLE, Montpelier Action Plan for Local Emergencies. As you're probably aware and saw in the, my initial letter to you, the statutory requirements come under 20 BSA, section six, that local emergency management plans must be adopted, annually reviewed, the plans adopted during town meeting and new this year is June 1st, where previously it was a May deadline. Required for the city to receive federal preparedness funds and increased reimbursement through the ERAP. Has to be done publicly worn meeting and the signed adoption form. This plan is a significant change from the short-form plan that was previously adopted by the city, using a whole, whole community approach through the Montpelier Commission for Recovery and Resilience, consultation through AC Disaster Consulting, an emergency management consulting firm. They've developed the Enhanced Local Emergency Management Plan. This slide shows you the people that were involved in plan development as listed in the Emergency Management Plan. Maple is an adaptable multi-hazard document outlining the city and community's intended preparedness response in short-term recovery to emergencies caused by natural and human-caused When we talk about whole community and public outreach that's done, you may hear the belief that this was done in a, in a vacuum. Targeted stakeholder meetings were held on these dates, showing the stakeholders that were involved in it, along with individual feedback from completed surveys, feedback via email or in-person communications, public forum breakout group participants in, in October, public forum participants at the high school. Key components of the plan, without getting into the same level of detail that we got into in October, the operational framework of the plan includes monitoring and activations of the plan in the Emergency Operations Center, the Emergency Operations Center positions and duties defined by, by role and task, volunteer and donation management, roles and responsibilities to include the emergency management program structure, how the EOC functions, who answers to who, city financial management to include emergency spending per the, per the purchasing policy, listing of shelters. Can you hear me now? Okay. Communications component, spelling out the Communications Crisis Response Team, how the internal city communications and external public communications are spelled out as to the avenues and outlets used on social media and mainstream media, local postings of fixed documents, partners and resources to include local and state partners, secondary partners, organizations and communities requiring additional coordination. These all were represented in the partners that we met with throughout the development of the plan. Community preparedness speaks to knowing your risk, including preparation before, before an event, and preparing evacuation bags, go-bags, as you may. So speaks toward continuous improvement, annual review of the plan, training and exercises. And then included at the end of the plan before you is a flood annex, which speaks specifically to flood-related activities. And then the appendices to include the operational checklists. And those operational checklists are for public business and for staff. And that's what I've got for a presentation, trying to keep in tune with your timelines.
I appreciate that. And, and this is mostly not new to people, because if you've been to the Resiliency Commission or other meetings, you've seen a lot of this already, right?
Yes, sir.
Council members, any questions? Adrian?
I have another question. One of the, I, I remember the old version of this, which was just a form. So this is definitely a huge improvement. Obviously, there was a lot of thought that went into this, and thank you for including all the community partners and getting people's voices into this plan. One of the questions I have, just because my background's in public health, and I, I don't, maybe it's in this beautiful document that you have, but was there coordination with the local Department of Public Health as well as CBMC? Because I know that was a gap after our flood and an opportunity to partner with them for future, you know, responses.
Yeah, and I can speak to some of the outreach. And maybe John can speak a little more to the partners before my tenure in Montpelier. But those partners, you know, are seen at the table. Additionally, new this year is meeting with the state's emergency management regional coordinator, where before it would go to the Regional Emergency Planning Commission. Now it goes to the VEM, and they vet the process before it comes before you. So, and then talking toward the CERT and stuff like that.
John?
Yeah, come on, John.
We actually, it's not reflected in this plan, but we have a great partnership now with the Vermont Department of Health.
Could you identify yourself?
Sorry, thank you. John Copan's Director of the Montpelier Commission for Recovery and Resilience. There's a woman named Diana Chase, who's the regional coordinator for the Department of Health. And so in fact, we've been co-sponsoring Go-Bag, Go-Bag workshops with Diana. So that, part of, part of what, there's this formal plan, and then there's some community-based work we're doing following on this plan. And those emergency kit workshops are an example of the, of the partnerships and the community-based work that we're doing to really supplement.
Just to follow up and say, you know, one of the, you know, after our flood, the hospital plays a very, very important role in response. You know, when folks are out there responding to the flood and the dredges of the dirt and... You know, when folks are out there responding to the flood and the dredges of the dirt and the kids, you know, just as a public health professional inhaling, you know, toxins in our, in our mud and muck. And, you know, people were getting nails in their hand. One of the things that was very apparent to me in terms of that gap was having a medical tent. And so I worked with my friends who were just, happened to be really connected with CBMC. And my husband's a nurse, and so we were able to immediately get a tent into town with the, with the whole, I forgot what you call it.
With the hub.
With the hub.
Yeah.
And they were providing tetanus shots, clean-up cuts. And so I think they're a very, very critical partner in terms of any type of response. And it is in their strategic plan to have this community outreach. So I would just encourage you, as you continue to evolve this emergency response plan, to please consider connecting with the hospital because they're a very important partner in terms of that medical support response.
In fact, they now, they now have a staff person at CBMC specifically around emergency preparedness and response. So, yeah, absolutely.
Other council questions? Anyone?
Thank you for putting this plan on the map and everybody who involved. Preparing, I really like it. And there are so many details in the document. Then we received an email from John today with the implications. So they were also good. My question will be, is there any plan to let people know that there's a plan like that? Because in your document, there's our residents will do this, other like stakeholders will do that. So what is your plan to make everybody be aware of this plan? Like anything in schools or any like public announcements, like meetings? Just to explain that there's a plan here and when something happens, hopefully not, you have to do this. Thank you.
I think, thank you, Counselor. I think a lot of the feedback on those checklists and stuff came out of the October meeting. And since that time, there have been public forums for explaining the pieces for the public in the plan and preparation, and preparedness trainings and workshops for them. So there's certainly more outreach to do. But I think some of that's been going on with getting people ready even before the adoption of the plan. It makes good sense to have that education and continue that effort.
I will add something. If, if you want to do anything based on the districts, I'm happy, probably. So we, we will be happy to support and attend those and just like make people know what's happening. Because they're a very good list for residents, but if they don't, if they don't know what to do and there is a plan like that, it will be very challenging for us as a community to apply this plan. Thank you.
John, I wonder if you could explain a little bit about NeighborNet, the role that that would play in making the community aware and disaster preparedness?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So one, one component of this work is establishing something we are, we've named Montpelier NeighborNet. And the idea is having these hyper-local neighborhood organizations. Actually, a couple of counselors have participated in some of these, in some of these meetings. And, and the idea is that ultimately neighbors know best what neighbors need, particularly in times of emergency. And so we're just trying to activate that, that network of, of, of local concern and compassion for one another. And so in fact, we've got a launch event coming up on June 7th as we really work to essentially blanket the city with these local NeighborNet organizations. And honestly, we'll also, I mean, one, one of the NeighborNets is on St. Paul Street. And it's, it's a good example where one of the things that they're doing on St. Paul Street is they're taking an inventory of the resources they have in case there's an emergency. Like who has the sump pump in the neighborhood? Who has the wood stove? Who, who has the other resources on, on that street? So for us, I think the next phase of work, now that, now, as, as soon as Maple is adopted, is really rolling it out more deeply into the community with both events and materials. We have found really strong interest in these go-bag workshops. In fact, people are hungry for that sort of thing. And we think, what I, I want you to appreciate though is now that, if you think about the short form that you approved previously, that wasn't really much for the public to interface with. There is a lot in, in this Maple Plan that, that we think we can distill down to really engage in documents for the public to engage with. And, and that's the key is the public needs to know, where do they fit into this emergency plan? What's their responsibility versus what is the city's responsibility?
John or Chief, one of, I remember that one of the questions that came up in the wake of our last flood was the question of your, your ability to evacuate can vary depending on whether you're east or west of downtown and you could be, could be blocked. And I wonder what we've done to address that.
I think some of the work obviously still needs to be done with identifying successful evacuation routes, messaging of what evacuation routes look like. The shelter agreement with the Red Cross locally, certainly the step forward to being able to house some people locally versus trying to get high-water vehicles to fit the, the bearing. And having a swell water team to move people to a little pad for them to be picked up by, on the transportation that still may not be able to get there. So there is some work that's been done. There's obviously more work to be done to identify other areas that maybe you're cut off and you get an air that you have until you get somewhere.
Okay. Thanks. Okay.
Yeah, I'm just like, full disclosure, I'm a member of the Montpelier Commission on Recovery and Resilience, although I had very little to do with this plan. But I just want to remind folks of, you know, after the flood and the large public forums that we had, one of the real things that we heard about is greater clarity about roles and responsibilities and who's responsible for what. And, you know, I just really think that this plan is a huge step forward in the sense of a really robust community-wide plan that identifies the different stakeholders, who does what and how. And there's definitely a ton of work to do to actually build that infrastructure, to make this plan a reality. But I'm frankly like really proud of it. And I think that, you know, the former Director of Vermont Emergency Management was the consultant that helped put this thing together. And, you know, literally hundreds of hours went into it. And I just want to acknowledge, you know, John's leadership, but definitely Mark Gwynn and Ally Richards played a really outside, outsized role in putting this together. And I also just really want to commend Chief Libby, who kind of just jumped in halfway through this and was just game for it. And so really feel like it's been a team effort and, yeah, really proud of the plan and really appreciate the people who did the hard work to make it happen.
Thanks, man. Any questions or comments from the public? Oh, sorry, Adrian.
Just in the spirit of continuous improvement, when I, when I read this, it's maybe, once again, there's a lot of information to digest this week, so I could be wrong. It's focused on emergency response for flood. But when I think of emergency, an emergency plan, I also want us to think of, I mean, when we look at the world, right? We've got fires, we've got nasal outbreaks, we've got, you know, all these things that are, you know, maybe we've never really thought of before, but, you know, we think of every year or even as you think about this plan, how do we incorporate all the disasters that we can even possibly anticipate in our, in our town beyond water?
Yeah, and I think you look at hazard risk assessments in the community, identify what hazards are most likely to happen. State of Vermont water hazards are the number one threat, right? So that annex is built out now and going forward, we can continue to look at the hazard assessment for the community, build out annexes that hopefully next year we can bring you for another one, two of those that are well thought out and put together, kind of pick out the ones that are more probable than putting together a tornado plan today.
But just to clarify, like, the bulk of the plan is agnostic about what the public's are for disaster. It's really only the flood annex. And because of the likelihood of floods, that's the first annex we're starting with. But just like the chief said, future annexes.
All right, thanks. Any other questions from council? Any questions or comments from the public? Steve.
I want to, Steve Whitaker, I want to just cast this in the light of process. This is clearly a government function and our city government did not contract for the creation of this plan. This plan was prepared through contracts that have not been made public, through correspondence that's not public, through meetings that were not open to the public. And that's not the way government does business. It's, it's anathema to the way public, now, I'm not saying a lot of good work didn't go into this plan, but this plan should not be adopted at this point. It should be accepted provisionally and then all the gaps that you're beginning to see. And I haven't even seen a printed copy of this plan. And I went looking for it at the Montpelier Strong website and couldn't find it. Montpelier site couldn't find it. So it, I just looked at the binder and there's no mention of these NeighborNets that we just heard about as that being a core function, other types of emergencies. I'm afraid that if this is adopted, it'll be a year and we'll only have this discussion when it comes time to re-adopt it next year. Whereas I believe this should be a starting point. It should become a public document now and be heretofore prepared in, y'all have to think up the, the venue and the, the group of people that are going to do it. But they need to keep developing this plan. I wanted, I asked to see the contract between the consultant to know what the scope of work was. Not available. Nothing's available, you know? So this is not the way public, public business is done fundamentally. And I ask you to like, take that to heart. That, the integrity that you bring to this process and the, the lack thereof that you overlook compounds this, this problem. So I applaud the work that went into it. It was not done through a proper process for it to be adopted without study or scrutiny by a city council of just like, oh yeah, we got off without doing the work. Now it's time, now the work starts. And it should be developed and maybe adopted end of the summer or something. You know, do another short form. But provisionally, we need to examine and fill the gaps and find out how we're going to engage with the public, you know? Because this, this was a failure as, as regards to public participation, transparent plan development.
Thank you, Steve. Yes.
Good evening. Lynn Wild, Number 5 St. Paul Street. I'm kind of the instigator of the NeighborNet system. Started it on St. Paul Street in 2016, planting trees to improve climate resilience. And out of that, we got to know neighbors on the street, which is the key essential for any kind of response is to know who you have to work with and who needs your help. And so NeighborNet, up until recently, has been street by street or neighborhood by neighborhood. And we have, at the point we are now, we have a really good roster of who lives on the street and we know who needs evacuation and who for themselves. One of the things that I learned in my years of working in emergency management in Texas, where I was a logistics chair at the State Health Department, was that for the first 48 to 72 hours, you're on your own. And that's not something that the city can teach individual neighbors. It's not something that the state can teach communities. It's something that you have to be willing to learn. And there are classes to take and there are people to talk to, but you've got to get your, your folks motivated to do it. And I would have to say that the water rising on July 11th up on the first step of my porch is pretty motivating. And we've been able to get a lot of people to sign up and give us their numbers so we can reach them if there's something like that happening again. Just to be brief, having read this plan and having been a NIMs coordinator back in Texas, I am really impressed with the integration of the four constituents of the city, the partners, the community and the residents. And I think that, yes, there's some work to be done. Continuous improvement doesn't mean that we're going to be done within a year or two years or three years. But I think it's a very worthy place to begin. As to contracts, I'm sure if they're there, they'll be made apparent. And to get this work done with the Vermont Emergency Management Department was really, you can tell it's been done by people who do emergency management. One more thing I want to say about this is that, having ended the day by my memory. Anybody have that? I think my questions are, how do we get the people on St. Paul Street and other streets to engage in actual exercises? So, because you don't really know what you're doing until you get faced with a scenario. And we used to do those all the time in Texas. Is that my time?
That's your time.
Okay. So that was my question is how do we get people engaged? And I want to thank everyone that's worked on this. It's very, very good.
Thank you very much, Mark.
I'm Mark Gwynn. I live on Nelson Street. I want to just start out by reiterating a lot of things we've already heard, which is a lot of gratitude for Chief Libby, for the partnership with the city, for all the stakeholders who met with us, including Washington County Mental Health and Good Samaritan and Another Way, et cetera, et cetera. And I want to focus my comments mostly on what's sort of outlined on page 42 of this document, which is the, the community part. It's actually the last two or three bullets that were in Chief Libby's presentation. The community, the community's preparation part, the continuous improvement part. I think what we need, as Lynn was just saying, you don't know how you're doing something until you actually start to go through it. So what we need with a plan like this, the reason it was created was that the city itself doesn't have the capacity to be all things to all people in every emergency, right? It takes a total community. So what we're asking with this plan is for the city to state what it is going to do so that at least the city's role is clear. Meanwhile, community pieces, the NeighborNet activities, the individual household preparedness, business preparedness workshops, which are currently being held out, are being carried out and, and planned, all of those things coalesce around something. We don't know what we're doing until we start doing it. So what we really need from city council is the leadership to adopt this plan so that we have a square one from which to begin this continuous improvement that over the coming years will allow us to do a lot of the things that Adrian pointed out, bringing in memorandums of understanding with all of the necessary partners. They're not all included in here. But this is a way, I believe, for city staff to begin implementing the things that are there, identifying the holes that are not there, and then working with other community partners, businesses and residents to eventually fill out a complete plan. I'd also just like to say again then, about the process of this, as Ben pointed out, this was created through hours and hours of volunteered time. We used the help of a consultant that was paid for completely with private money. There was no public investment or public cost to the city or to the residents to create this plan. And the city itself had, had said, really did not have the capacity to go forth and create a plan like this. So that is where we stepped in to sort of fill that gap and offer this up to the city as a really good starting point to begin that continuous improvement. Finally, I'd like to just point out that the options, if we do not adopt this plan, are to go with the same four or five-page thing we've had before. This is. No, I don't. Thank you, Steve. Well, all right.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks very much.
And I will, I appreciate all your work you did on this. I've been told that you're mostly the author of this. And I know you'll be very modest, but great work. I want to especially express my appreciation for having a glossary of acronyms and initialisms at the back because we all get used to using a jargon that members of the public don't necessarily know. Is there, council members, is there a motion to approve the, the plan as submitted? Is there a second? Any further? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Thanks for all your work on this. All right. Next up, here on Federal Building. Update and discussion.
Josh Jerome, Planning Department.
And John Copan, Montpelier Commission for Recovery and Isu.
So, as you know, the federal government is divesting itself of their building downtown and they've reached a critical point in their process where they have reached out throughout the federal government to see if any of their agencies can use the asset or if a homeless organization can use it for homelessness activities and manage it. And the answer has been no. None of the federal agencies want it and it can't be used and managed by a homeless organization at Central Vermont. So now, they are in the negotiated sale phase of their process and that's a 30-day process where they have sent letters out. They, we just received a letter one day after now and I don't know if it's been dispersed to council. And they've sent the letters out to the city and the state, asking them if they're interested in wanting to pursue purchasing the building. And it requires an action by May 21st, that's the deadline. And so at this point, you know, I think that question is before council and I think there's some things to consider. I think part of the concern has always been, you know, what is going to happen with this huge asset in the middle of the downtown? And how can the city and the community try to preserve an ability to effectuate change at that site? And so, I think there's a question as to whether or not the city should put forward a letter of interest, which does not require a lot of material, to at least extend the timeline so that stakeholders of the community can work towards trying to come up with a plan or a vision to help secure what can happen there. Because I think there's organizations throughout the community who are talking about that, nonprofit organizations talking about it, and there's still some restrictions as to what would happen to the building, like section 106 review is going to be, is going to happen with the state. GSA, federal government has that letter drafted to the state historic preservation office. It's on their desk and it'll be sent to the state sometime in the next week. That will start the historic preservation review and by all accounts of our communications with people on the state and the GSA, that there might be covenants placed on that building that will require the exterior to be preserved because it does represent architectural style that is not prevalent in the state, certainly not in Montpelier. But that is a process to, that has not yet started yet. So, I think that's a question for council as to whether or not the city in partnership with stakeholders like John in the commission, working with other organizations to try to figure out a way to buy some more time, to have a conversation of what that site could be.
And John, do you have anything to add at this point?
Well, I should first sort of explain my presence or our interest in this. I think for the Montpelier Commission, we do see some significant resilience implications in terms of what happens at the 87 State Street. And I would describe those as follows. One is, we think it's a real opportunity in terms of the parking question. As you all know, we have a ton of pavement that is along our river that is state parking and this could be an opportunity to potentially relocate some of that parking and put that riverfront to a much better use in terms of green space and flood resilience. Also, you know, one of the priorities of the commission is fundamentally a vibrant and adaptive downtown. And so, again, this parcel, we're talking about a building that's 70,000 square feet and we're talking about 1.6 acres right in the core of our downtown. If the future of that site involves resilient housing, resilient parking and more resilience within the federal building, what we're talking about is a reinvestment in our downtown in a way that's resilient to future, to future play. So, just to sort of be clear about why we are interested in this, I would say the other thing I would highlight is we are, we are working with a great legislative delegation to, to secure a $100,000 appropriation, essentially to do a study of the building and the opportunities for that building and some adjacent parcels in terms of economic development, housing and parking. Because, big picture, this parcel has tremendous, I think, implications in terms of the future of Montpelier. Whenever we have done studies, and there have been multiple studies of what we call the pit, right, the parking that runs along Port Street, they've always left out the federal parcel because the sense was it was never going to be in play. It was always going to be a federal building and a parking lot. The fact that it is now in play represents a real opportunity. And so, I think what we're doing as a commission is trying to be a convener with partners to see where there are common interests. And my encouragement to you all is essentially, give the city a seat at the table in this conversation by engaging in this process. That does not, by no means does that commit the city in terms of ultimately necessarily purchasing the property. But the reality is, we need to do due diligence and we need time to do that due diligence. There's, at this point, concern about how quick this process is going to go if no entity raises their hand and says they're interested in participating in this process. So, I'm not sure that's a decision that has to be made tonight, but I'm trying to frame up for you all what we think is going to be important for you all to consider before May 21st.
And to be clear, if, if nobody, either state government or city government puts in a letter of interest, then it just frees up the government to put it on the market, put it up for auction and it could be sold to anyone.
Yeah, there is a public auction that would go to, just like eBay is online. They would do an appraisal to come up with a fair market value. So, they have the right to refuse offers that are made on the public auction site if they don't feel like it's meeting a certain threshold, but anybody can put bid on it.
And when we met with the people from GSA and toured the building, they were telling us, well, this is going to move pretty fast and they were right, it really has. So, and they were clearly predicting this is not going to be seen as appropriate for homeless and services.
Yeah. And obviously, you know, the federal government is not operating like normal, right? And so, when talking with GSA to try to get a sense of how much time could the community buy to have these additional conversations, we're not talking like 12 months, right? We could ask for that long, but their response to me was, we're probably not going to give you 12 months to figure this out. We might come back and say, figure it out in five. So...
Any other council members have questions?
Yeah, I mean, I would just comment that there's, there's really two things at play, like an enormous opportunity to think about how our downtown is redefined in a resilient fashion. And the other end of that is what happens if, you know, we have examples in our community of people buying properties on speculation and them not being developed. And this is a really important parcel that in many ways is a keystone, I think, to the redevelopment. And I just want to acknowledge that we're not talking here, you know, what we're talking about is an opportunity to put together a public-private partnership that could look at, you know, potential uses or the city having some kind of say or shape what happens to that parcel. Because if it goes up on GSA's version of eBay, we will not, we will not have that. And so, I just think it's, it's unfortunate that it's moving at such a breakneck speed, but you know, this is where we are and I think it's really important that the entire community understand the implications of what could happen.
Sal.
So, after living in Vermont for 30 years, my job took me to Washington DC and when I got back in 2017, I was amazed to find that the pit was still the pit. Big empty spot, a donut hole in the middle of the city. And also, when I got back, it was the beginning of the change in really the economic rhythm of the city. I mean, we no longer, it started with the pandemic, the lockdown and went to, you know, hybrid working and culminated in the flood. I hope that's the end of it, but we have not recovered. People are trying hard and it's looking better and better, but it's, it's still a critical situation. And I think what happens downtown in the next few years will determine the future of the city for a long time. It sounds to me like we don't have anything to lose by expressing interest and buying some time to see if we can put together some sort of coalition to make something out of that, that parcel. And we, you know, we have, it's sort of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity because we have the state and the other, the feds, Vermont Mutual, I think, are part of the discussion. All of the sort of adjoining property units are involved and that, that's not going to happen. So, I don't see that we have much to lose by, by expressing, expressing, which is all we have to do is express interest. I know there's a, there's a list of, of, you know, questions that we have to answer, but seems like it's worth, worth pursuing and, and quickly.
Dana.
Thank you for the presentation. Jack, when you said we made the GSA, what can we find here? The city or...
There were a couple of meetings involving with me, me, the city manager, the deputy assistant city manager, I think Mike and Josh were also there, and maybe Chris Lumbras, but we toured the building. The building is structurally fine, but it's weird going through it because there are places where people's desks still have their laptops on them and their cups full of pens and stuff.
So, were there any documents or...
Were there any what, documents? No. Yep. And...
So, are they coming or...
They were just, they were not warned me, they weren't the, weren't the official legislative body and I can tell you that we tried to get GSA to come here to a city council meeting to make a presentation and they said they were told not to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
So, there we are.
I'm really sure that everybody knows.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, I would entertain a motion to direct the...
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
So, I just want to make it clear, what is the city's role in this, like showing the interest? Are they planning to purchase this building? If so, where's the budget for it? How much they are planning to spend? If our role is to support commission of resiliency, what's our role? So, I, I like when John explained their goals, they were very clear, they explained forward, I bought them. But with the city, you have, you have no information, so how can I say yes or no without any information what our role is as a city? So, I, I would be more comfortable to talk about this again than me to have more information. I know the time is limited, but now I'm, I'm feeling like I am signing a blank paper and I don't know what I am signing. So, thank you.
Gary.
Yeah, sort of along the same lines, this, I definitely want to take advantage of whatever opportunities this space can give us and the fact that it's available and happening and I don't want to miss out on that. And I think, you know, it would, I agree that this is a time to really pay attention to our downtown. I want to be really clear what it is you're asking us to do right now. It sounds like it's, send a letter of interest, which says we might want to maybe purchase it?
Yeah, in essence.
And we want some time to plan that?
Propose in some sort of public benefits, a timeline and a set of due diligence steps maybe to come to a decision of whether or not the city can purchase. Let's, let's be honest, like the city can't purchase this.
Right.
Right? This is just to buy time so that stakeholders can try to come together, right?
Can you though, tell us a little bit more about what would actually be in that letter? What we would be expressing interest in, what we would be saying?
Well, I mean, again, like the timeline, how long is it going to take the city to come up and answer the questions of due diligence, right? That's one of the requirements. A public benefit, which GSA says is very flexible. You make the case for it, wait, have a little public benefit, sure. And yeah, so it's, that's pretty much it. It's right here in the letter.
The letter? Okay, okay. Great.
I, can I suggest what I think this really is? I think this is like, the city raises its hand because it's one of the only entities that can do it. It's the mechanism and the instrumentality to put together a public-private partnership. Who's in that public-private partnership? Central Vermont Economic Development Corp., Varation, Regional Planning Commission, Evernorth, Downstreet, you know, potential players from the state, like a working group that can actually put together some kind of development group or proposal that finds a path forward. I don't think we, I don't, I think it's premature to know exactly what that path forward is other than the reality of the city's limited capacity to buy anything, right? But it becomes the mechanism for putting together people who can put together a vision and a potential plan for purchasing something. And I would say that the city's role would be like the key partner at the table, that is the convener, that is the, you know, that lends credibility to the effort, that, you know, engages the community, like all of those things. The truth is, I just feel like in terms of community and economic development in our downtowns in Vermont, it does not happen without public-private partnership. Without the intervention of the municipality, it doesn't happen. And you can see that in St. Johnsbury and St. Albans and Winuski and South Burlington, it doesn't happen. And so, if we want something positive to happen in the site, it'll only happen if we take an active role.
So folks, I see a couple of hands up. I will mention, we are at about 17 and a half minutes. We've been told that we do not have to take action on this tonight, so we could take this up at a future meeting if, if people want to go into this in more, more depth.
When we talk about this next meeting, can you just please bring the letter you are planning to send to the state and just like define what the city's role here specifically? Because I don't want to see like, city has an interest in purchasing. We should clear that our role is to support public-private partnership because I don't want to hold city, like because you said you are interested in purchasing. Now it is time, so what are you thinking, kind of, actually? Yeah, thank you.
Sure. I will, let somebody go, yes.
Jim.
Just a quick question, does the state have any interest in this at all?
What's the question? We didn't have a letter, so I don't, we haven't had any of those conversations. I don't think they would be, I mean, they already have a bunch of underutilized assets at the place downtown. So, but it could be an opportunity to partner, collaborate.
I just wondering if they had it, you know, anybody reached out to them and even asked them anything, that's all.
I will say that for the commission, we have engaged various state players, including EGS, over the course of the last few months to imagine the possibilities, particularly around shared parking, these are where we need collaboration. To say that they are ready to say yes would be way premature, but we certainly feel like it's important to be engaging in that conversation.
Thank you.
Sal.
Just one quick question.
Just one quick question. So this letter has been sent to the city of Montpelier and only to the city of Montpelier?
And state.
And to the state. So the city can express interest? The state can express interest as well?
Yes. Technically by statute, nonprofit organizations are funded with public dollars and also, and CDRPC, Montpelier, they are continuing to supplement.
So they've all been notified with a similar letter now?
I don't know if they've all been notified, but by statute, both of the agencies that handle, but whether or not GSA sent them a letter, I don't know. I do know that it's something the city can, state.
So it didn't mean we can, you can ask to have a letter prepared for review at the next meeting and have it as an agenda.
So what people want to do? All right.
Steve, in the interest of expedition, I'm going to move, take your comments when we take this up at a future meeting.
It's tightly now because it affects what work gets done before the next meeting.
All right.
And that's the transparency issue that I made prior applies fundamentally here, but we're at this, it's starting point. So public-private partnerships, there's no assurance of, of transparency. So how we structure this deal, if, if the city is the recipient of the building, even if it's acquired in partnership, but we also might prefer a state because National Life's lease, I mean, state of Vermont's lease on National Life comes to an end soon. And if we could bring those workers, you know, the Commerce Agency back down into town, that would be good for our businesses. So I, I think we first fundamentally insist that however we structure this, we do it with transparency and, you know, not, you, you serve a new role sitting on this body that is our shadow government right now. And so I'm a little reticent about your advocating for more of that. So thanks.
Thank you. All right. We'll, we'll get this on a future agenda. Now we're up to item 10. Stephen Saban's pasture. Alan, I think I saw you online. Alan Goldman. Alan Goldman, if you can turn on your microphone and camera and start talking. Alan Goldman, are you there? Are you hearing me? Raise your hand or make some kind of signal.
Can you hear me now, sir?
I can hear you. I still can't see you, but, but go, go ahead.
At least, thank you. At least I was able to unmute me. Thank you. Hold on one second. Thank you very much. Well, thank you. I know you're all very busy, so I'll try to be very quick tonight. Thank you again for letting us address you. And we're really excited. Saban's is going to be a wonderful project. We're working very, very hard. I want to apologize to the counselor who I spoke to last time. Act 47 and Act 181 are moving very rapidly. So somebody had asked us, if we were going to do the senior housing, something would be affordable. I apologize. Before Act 1, before Act 111 had, Act 181 had come out, that actually was the case. But we have to change it. So the senior housing project will be Act 250 exempt, but under Act 181, I want to correct ourselves, we do have to have a component of affordability. And so I wanted to add, that'll also be something very, very exciting. And I apologize for the mistake. It's just that Act 47 and 181 are complex and they're moving very rapidly. So much so, we've had to gain some counsel to try to navigate some of these waters. I wanted to thank you again, Mr. Miller, for pointing out that we have changed some of our jurisdictions. I think it's fantastic. And we now have a 1 to 4, a 5 to 15, and a 15 plus, which really opens the window of opportunity. And we can't thank you enough. I made a mistake. And so I just wanted to point out as well, if you please go to development standards, 3001B, it says mixed use. It says any combination of permitted or conditional uses may be allowed on a single parcel. One, for residential uses are in a separate or multiple structures, use will be regulated based on the total number of units on the parcel. Three single unit homes on a non-subdivided parcel will therefore be a conditional use in the rural district because three dwellings is a, is a conditional use in that district. So I did find that that contradicted the chart and I'm sure we want to change that. And we would appreciate that. Then we're going to give you a much more defined outline, but as things are moving so quickly and we realize we have to keep tuning up, I will give you that later. But I wanted to then ask you folks about something that's come to our attention because we're really ready to go. We have, we're, we're, we're ready to go now. So something came out, I guess on April 21st. There is something happening with the state and 67 million. There is a CDBG-dr block grant action plan taking place. And much of it is being targeted towards our Washington County. And so I guess, I believe the CCR project is applying for four or $5 million or something in that range. And we too would like to please get on that ability to apply for that grant. We are ready to go now. And that would be fantastic. And we'd love, Mr. Miller, if you could, to explain some more about that because I've made plenty of mistakes. We're just anxious to see if we could really make something like that happen.
Thank you, Alan. I don't think it's particularly useful to have Mike go over all this stuff with you in a public meeting. I would encourage you to, and Doug Zorzy to sit down with the, with the planning office to discuss all, all of this. And, and one of the, I think the real question I have for you, and given that you don't really need to keep coming back to the city council to tell us what your plans are because we don't act to approve development plans. But I'm still very interested in if you have a timeline for when you'll be ready to apply for permits. Because that's, I would love to see something happen there. You know, 40 plus years ago, when I moved to Montpelier, I would drive along Barry Street. And at that time, there were, there were speedboats parked on the, on the bottom of Saban's pasture across from Bevins Speed and Cycle. And they were, I guess they were their inventory. But, and being a housing lawyer way back then, I was thinking, well, that looks like an ideal place for housing. And so I would love to see housing there. And I wonder if you could give us an idea of when you'll be ready to apply for your permits.
Yes, Mayor. And we're very, very excited. And I feel the same way. We both have been watching Saban's for probably 30, 40 years. The first thing was to really make sure we have the city's support and that we're going in the right direction. So when I first told the counselor, I did not mean to make a mistake, that it would only be senior housing, that will be senior housing with an affordable component. Mayor, we have been ready since October of '22. We were asked to step aside and we did. And so we have done that all this time. Now Act 250 has changed to 47 and 181. And so we're very anxious to move forward. And to hear that this potentially 67 million, where a big piece will be targeting Washington County, we have a fantastic opportunity to be able to move forward. And we would like to meet with the council in private to share the estimates we have for the road to go in as soon as you have some space. So our timeline would be, if we had surety of what we're able to do, I would start getting second and third estimates. And hopefully with all permits in place, we could start breaking ground maybe by the end of the summer or early fall.
I'd love to see that. Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Thank you, Alan.
Well, I was going to say, before we close, so I appreciate what you said. I hope we will take a look at 300, 3001B because it does contradict it. And then we would love to find out more, if possible, with the council. How could this CDBG-dr block grant action plan hopefully help us, potentially the CCR, and any other things that we're trying to work on in our community? I'm very excited to see if we can help, if we can gain access to that, to those funds to help all of our projects. And so we'd ask in final, then, how could we possibly meet with the council in private so we can go over some of the estimates that really can't go public?
I would suggest starting, meet with Mike Miller. I don't know that there's a need to have an executive session with the council. I know that Mike is an expert in community development. And so is Josh. And so why don't we start there? And then we'll discuss what the next steps are, if you even need to be before the council.
Well, I appreciate that. We will heed your advice. But Mayor, I have to say, we, we, we may ask to respectfully come back. And we look forward to whenever we can give you some more information.
Great. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. And I apologize, Council, that I gave you misinformation about there was no affordable component for that senior housing. I made a mistake.
It's okay. It's complicated stuff. See you, Alan.
Thank you, folks.
All right. Next up, Elf's Club RFP decision. Where are we with this? Who's up?
So I'm happy to kind of tee up this conversation. So in your packets, you have three proposals that have come forward. Back on March 27th, the city issued a request for proposal for community services up at Country Club Road. And so really what we were looking for is for, you know, entities to come forward with a plan to work with city staff on a long-term lease for recreational or community uses to complement existing services in future city plans. Also in your packet is a visioning report on community services. That was not intended really as an alternative proposal. It was really to kind of showcase what the community services has planned at that site. So as you consider other proposals, you might see what, you know, might be compatible with those uses. And so I'll just cut to the chase here. What staff has recommended based on the review of the proposals is that you take a look at the Turtle Island hub proposal and the Generations Vermont proposal and instruct staff to be working with those entities to come up with some proposals to bring forward in terms of leases. We also felt that it would be important to set Turtle Island as a priority in those discussions and bringing those lease terms back, you know, maybe in sort of five to seven year term, in consideration of what might be done on the property going forward. So really, it's a discussion aside, how you want to move forward. Really, we're just looking for you to kind of give guidance on selecting, you know, one or a couple of the proposals to work with and instruct city staff to engage.
Thanks, Kelly. One of the things, at the outset of this conversation, I, I just have to ask, how should council, first off, I want to mention, I got an email from someone saying that it's been kind of hard to hear people. So please remember to use our microphones. How should council be thinking about this question in the context of the decision we also made to take another look at how we're planning on configuring development on that parcel?
So that's an interesting question. I mean, so right now, council is, you know, considering, you know, alternative concepts for that particular property. The RFP was formatted before, you know, we decided to take another look. So really, you know, it's concept day that we'd be looking at. But, you know, we might be able to talk with entities, see what their needs are, bring it back for you to discuss. And hopefully, you know, there would be some review of the Country Club Road plans coming to a future agenda so we could try to match those up.
Sally.
Well, the subcommittee has not yet officially met, but we're, we're close to having a, a date and putting together an agenda for a meeting to look at the concept. And I, I think it was somewhat misleading to talk about it as a flip-flop of housing and recreation. It's really just a reorientation of the, of the recreation area to, to use more of the, of the flat, flat land on the, on the side. I, I can't foresee that, that discussion would have much of an effect directly on, on continuing negotiations with these other organizations. We'll probably meet in early, early May as a subcommittee. I imagine we'd have some sort of recommendation shortly after that. Hopefully, I think by the 14th is what we were shooting for. But speaking personally, I don't, I don't foresee the need to, to hold up presuming conversations with Turtle Island on how they're initiating with Generations. I don't think that would affect it at least, not the, not, not this stage of the negotiation.
Okay. Cause one of the questions obviously is, is the building still going to be there? And you're not anticipating any resolution where we say, well, we don't need that building. We're going to reconfigure everything.
Well, no, I think part of, part of the study that we, part of the overall study by White and Burke included a review of the, of that building. I mean, to rebuild that building is probably a $7 million project. It's, it's still a very useful structure, a little odd in design and somewhat dated. But I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't suggest grazing in this one.
All right. Okay.
I would just concur. I mean, I think, you know, hopefully the conversation leads to some consensus around a concept very quickly. And I, I think it would be a mistake to delay moving forward with any kind of negotiation with the parties that have been identified.
All right. Counsel, where are we? Do you, Carrie?
So I have some questions about the proposals. This is a, a time to be asking those and is there a way we can get answers?
Yes. You want to?
Okay. I'll, I'll start with my questions and Kelly may be able to answer some of these. So, so the staff is recommending that we work with the, the hub and Turtle Island proposal and with the Generations Vermont proposal and try to find something that works with all of these together. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I didn't, it wasn't clear to me how just logistically that might work from reading the proposals. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Well, so I mean, I think, you know, all of the proposals are good. And we didn't want to really count any of them out. So we really wanted the opportunity to talk with each of the entities and kind of really determine, all right, based on these proposals, what would you like to see happen? What's your timeline? I mean, they provided that. But, you know, really to get into the nitty gritty details of what the needs would be, you know? So is there a way that we would be able to all work together on that site to develop those projects? So I think, I'm hoping that answers your question. I don't have the specifics because I think the, we did see that there was definitely a connection between, you know, childcare and also the Generations proposal, you know, but without talking to them about what might be possible.
Okay. So it sounds like what you're asking for is like a part two of the RFP process? You want to go and have conversations with them, get more information, and then come back with another recommendation for?
Yeah. So right now, as it stands, what we have in front of us, I mean, Turtle Island has a pretty clear business plan proposal that we would probably advance first, just because there's a need. And so we would take that up first. And then the other two entities, we would need to determine what that would look like on that site. There's a lot to hash out, to bring back to council to say, okay, here's the proposal and what it looks like on that site. Is this something you would accept or not? And so by selecting the entities or? or sort of what they put forward for proposals at this point, we would be proposing that we work with them to figure out, you know, how, you know, it could all sort of work on that location. I guess the idea, from a staff perspective, is that, you know, we would be interested in developing those partnerships to see if we could work something out. And so, there would be a part two. So, what you're suggesting is, yes, there would be a part two in terms of, you know, working with Turtle Island, working with the Hub, but also working with Generations to see if there's a way to maybe fit all the needs that have been proposed.
Palin?
So, all the discussions I remember, like the previous ones, I think we go telling groups, bring your proposal, then we approve, then you will start working on the plans. That's why I prefer picking one proposal. My preference is Turtle Island and Hub, because they were very, very detailed. And I didn't have any questions, because everything is there on their proposal. And it's one proposal. So, if you say, oh, Turtle Island can start, but it is one proposal, so they are the partners. So, why Hub is waiting? So, I prefer approving Turtle Island and Hub proposal. And then, you can, city staff can start working the plans. And they can, because they want to raise money, right? They want to start their campaign. So, they can start working. And we can see their plans are happening on that site. And if you want to do other things, you can still talk to the other group. But I think Turtle Island and Hub proposal should just got the support from city council, they can start their planning. Thank you.
Thanks, Palin. Jim?
Yeah. I would agree with what she said. I thought they've already kind of worked things out between the two of them, but maybe they both can come up here and tell me that I'm wrong. But, okay. So, I mean, if, and it seemed like to me they were coming together forward. And I was thinking that, yeah, I'm ready to say yes to both of you. And I don't think it should be one before the other. I think they're both very important. I mean, obviously, one's for the children of our city. But, you know, physical exercise. And I worked in First and Fitness, was a part-time trainer, and before I got felled by disability, I worked out a lot. And I can tell you, the benefits are tremendous, no matter what you do. And without Wedgewood and First and Fitness gone, they're gonna fill a hole that I think more Americans need to get involved in, because, well, I won't go into that. But I would like to, I would entertain maybe just a brief saying of how you have already figured things out about working together, and just kind of affirm that.
Yeah. I think I'd like to invite both groups to come up and make a brief presentation, because I think, it's only fair. Mark, do you want to come up? Yeah. Yes. Come up together. Yeah. You can pull up another chair. And I'm not gonna hold you to three minutes, but I would like to move it along.
Hi. My name is Phoebe Stone. I'm with Turtle Island, obviously.
I'm Mark LaRosa. I'm a Montclair resident, and I'm the board president at Turtle Island.
John Ray Hill with the Hub.
And Matt Winthrop with the Hub.
All right. You're on. I agree that it was.
Just talk about and reaffirm how you have really worked on this together, and you want to come forward together. And you've kind of worked out that part. I mean, that's what we're looking for to hear. That, that's what my question was, to affirm it. And so, we can say, yeah, let's move you both forward.
Yeah. I would like to say that we both feel pretty confident. I speak for Turtle Island, I guess, at this point. But we've felt confident working with the Hub, because it's clear that we have mutual respect for each other's organizations and missions. And we each only need a certain amount of space in that building. And it actually is a benefit to each of us, that we don't have to worry about what is gonna happen with the remainder of the building, because we know what would happen. And there, you know, we've even worked out some of the outdoor space logistics for at least the first five years or so. And we've talked about meeting regularly as our, you know, as a group to make sure that we continue that mutually beneficial relationship.
And I'd also, first, like to thank the Hub for their collaboration. It's been a very good partnership. We brought different levels of expertise together. And they helped us quite a lot in getting our proposal ready. And I think that one of the reasons it's attracted us is that with the Hub, what we want to do are both things that are noted as priorities for the city, recreation and childcare. So, I think it's a very good match. We're not really gonna be in any kind of competition. You know, I think it'll be a good partnership. And I couldn't speak for us, but I think mutually, we have seen that we are two groups who are ready to act. I can tell you that Turtle Island is in a very strong position to execute the plan that we gave you forthwith. So, I believe that you probably say the same thing about yourself. But I, we found that this is a great working relationship. And I think it's, I feel positive about going forward as collaborators.
We've also enjoyed this process. It's been fun to actually sit down and work things out with the group. We've found areas in the building where we can share functions, which is one of our goals. And we too are ready to go with our Phase 1, and to get that building back into use and get some more activity there. We've got a lot of work to do. And we would appreciate any speed you can give to get us going again.
All right. Council members, Carrie?
Sorry, I have a lot of questions.
Yeah.
And I don't know...
Don't be sorry. That's what we're here for.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm glad you all were able to come together. And I would love to see childcare there. I would love to see recreation there. I'm hoping that we can find a way to make this work. My questions are about kind of the longer-term visions for what's gonna happen there. So, I noticed in the proposal, and I could only, I'm sorry, it was very long. I could not read every single word. But I did my best. And it seemed to me that Turtle Island is thinking that possibly, they may want to, you may want to build a facility that will accommodate your whole... Because right now, you're talking about splitting your program, right, to two different places. But maybe down the road, you might be able to build something that would accommodate the whole thing at the Country Club Road property somewhere, right? Is that what you're thinking?
It's a possibility.
It's a possibility, yeah.
You know, given the fact that the council is looking at readdressing the needs and use of that space, we just wanted to put that out there as a great use of the space. And, you know, with Generations Vermont, that could be another great way to have another collaboration. We have spoken with them also, not recently, but it's a, it seems like a really great mission that they have. And I see this partnership as a launching, like a launch for that site, because it will just activate it and get people going there. And I know people go there as it is, like to go skiing and to walk their dogs. But it, once there's a restaurant and activity and childcare, you know, it's just gonna become a gathering place. And then, it's just gonna go from there, is how I see it.
So, you're thinking that it's possible that Turtle Island might purchase a piece of property there and build your own?
Purchase or rent? You know, we are in a crisis right now, so we're just like...
I know, this is down the road. Yeah, that's totally fine. So, then, along the same lines, it seemed to me that the Hub's plans were much more definitive, and that you're planning to build something at that site, where the current building is. And so, I'm wary about us committing to that as a city. I think we haven't really envisioned how we're gonna use that whole space or not, and committing to somebody else using that entire building and that entire space. I'm wary about that. So, and I also wonder what you're thinking in terms of how that would work, logistically as well? Are you talking about purchasing some of the property to build your own building on? Or are you hoping that you can lease it in perpetuity to put your own building on it? Or just tell me a little bit about how you envision that working?
All of that is subject to discussions that we've only just begun with the city. The RFP process temporarily derailed those discussions. We were having weekly meetings, but we really only had one truly substantive meeting with the city on March 6. We need to have ongoing meetings over the next weeks to address the public-private partnership between the Hub and the city. We think one way that our plans, our RFP proposal works is that, you know, for three years, we've been discussing a public-private partnership with the city. And yet, there's been very little meaningful collaboration in terms of those discussions. So, with Turtle Island seeking a five-to-seven-year lease, that sort of dovetails with the city being close to broke right now and looking for money from Trump administration. I don't know how that's gonna work. Anyway, Bill Frazier and Arnie McMullin, he can speak for himself, talked about it's gonna be a minimum of five to 10 years before the city is ready to contemplate building a new rec center or a community building up on that property. So, but in terms of the existing building and the visionary proposal, what do you call it, Kelly?
You got it. The visionary report that we put in there, we just wanted to make sure that there was context for what, you know, sort of people thinking. And so, I mean, I think what you're referencing in terms of collaboration with city staff is we just wanted to make sure that whatever proposal was selected, that it was known that there are components that we would want to work with that entity to kind of make sure that there was cohesion around the different ideas.
So, in terms of the city's designs on using some of that clubhouse space, if Turtle Island is moving out in five to seven years, the city could then move in. The city will still own the whole building. We're looking for a minimum 25-year lease on half of the building. But that's our opening ask from the city. We haven't had any opportunity to discuss that with the city. And we're looking, Bill Frazier was the one who suggested a 90-year lease on the two acres, more or less, that we're looking for to build our sports barn. But we're looking for a minimum of a 50-year lease. We need long-term leases in order to be eligible for both large grants and large loans. Otherwise, we really can't proceed with our business plan.
Carrie? Well, Carrie, do you have more questions? I'm sure you...
I didn't really get an answer to what happens at the end of that lease. Built a sports barn, and now it's 50 years later. And the city owns the land underneath it, and the Hub owns a sports barn. What happens then?
Either the lease is renewed, or I don't know. I would think, I can't answer what's gonna happen 50 years from now. Sorry.
It's not that long. And if we're gonna get ourselves into, start ourselves down a road of allowing somebody else to build on our property a very significant structure, then I think we have to have a sense of what's gonna happen after 50 years. It's not a ridiculous amount of time to contemplate.
I think it's, Steve Buglini is part of our group, and we miss him, because he's the realtor guy. But I think it's fairly standard to have long-term leases. So, I don't think that we're creating something which is unusual, and that shouldn't be part of the terms.
That's fine. I just want to understand what we're getting ourselves into.
Palin?
I remember we said how, before Turtle Island comes to the plane, city is not planning to sell any land. That's why they prepared a proposal based on leasing. So, as far as I remember, we said no selling any land. So, in 50 years, if we change our idea as a city council, then maybe the discussion will start. But for now, I don't know. We can go and check the meetings, minutes, or recording. But we already told them we are not planning to sell any land there.
Jim?
Yeah. I'm a, I understand your concern. I mean, in 50 years, you wanted, you would talk about renewing it. Not you. I won't be on the council. Maybe none of us will. But, and this has been done with the city before. We signed a 99-year lease on the parking lot behind Abisham's that goes to 1988. I don't know if a lot of the city knows that. But, you know, so, this isn't something unusual. And I would kind of agree with what Palin said. The city should just hold on to use of the land, because, I mean, let's just look at the scenario that it doesn't work. Maybe the economy goes crazy or something, and you build a building, and then it all collapses. Then, would have to be worked out how the building is dealt with, but the city would still own the land. And I think it would be odd to sell you a piece, And I think it would be odd to sell you a piece because, yeah, we'd make money on the sale, but we would never make any money, I don't think, from that point on, because you're a nonprofit. The building wouldn't go on the tax rolls. The land wouldn't go on the tax rolls. Am I right in saying that?
Maybe, maybe not.
Not necessarily.
Well...
Not necessarily. There's a whole body of law about what kinds of uses can be tax-free.
Right, it might be so.
The American Fly Fishing Museum case.
Right. But anyway, I can understand that if you put a building there, yeah, you want as long a term of lease as you want. And like, we wanted a long-term lease on that parking lot, and we went in and actually did the... I know, because I designed that parking lot myself, and we went in and fixed it up because we knew we were going to have it for a long time. So this is not unusual. And I appreciate that you want some stability and some security. And so I think if we hold on to the land, that gives us some.
Ben?
Yeah, I just, a couple of things. I just want to say, I'm so appreciative that both of you got together to work together collaboratively to make this happen, like a joint proposal. It's really great, and I just really appreciate that. I intend to support this in the sense of what we're doing right now, I believe, is authorizing the city staff to move forward to negotiate a lease. The question I have is, are we talking about one lease, two leases, two separate leases?
Several leases.
Okay, great. And, you know, I've kind of already shared some of these concerns with John and Matt, but like, I am supportive of this. I think the opportunity for partnership with the city is a good one. But I also, you know, think we really need to take a really hard look at the leases when they come back to us. You know, I think we have a pretty strong business plan from Turtle Island ready to go. I have questions about the hub in terms of the long-term strategy and the funding sources available for that, which contemplate loans from BETA, Community Loan Foundation, and the Community Development Block Grant, Disaster Relief Grants that we heard about tonight a little bit. And also, just, there's a line in here in the business plan that says, "We also assume the city of Montpelier will set lease payments in the first four to five years that will enable us to recruit the $300,000 we plan to spend on renovating half of the existing building." I see enormous value in a building being activated and having people in the building. I think it's a really great way to maintain and preserve an asset. But I also just want to really be thinking about, you know, what is the benefit to the city, right? And in some sense, we want to make sure that we're preserving the opportunity for our city recreation, city-led recreation, to be able to really have that partnership, right? So I just want to point out that it's a pretty complicated scenario. And again, really supportive, appreciate the fact that you're working together. But I think there's just real fundamental questions about business plan that we need to really understand. As we think about signing a 20-year lease, or a 30-year lease, or a 50-year lease, we want to make sure that the long-term interests of the city are met, which I know you know.
Folks, do any council members have more questions for these people? Because I also want to give the folks from Generations, if they're here, an opportunity to be heard. All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, I apologize. I don't know how to raise my hand. It's an appropriate time to speak.
Do you have a question about this? I'm going to hold off on that for now, Alan. Thank you.
Yes, I did have a question, but I'll hold off.
Okay, I'll hold off on you too, Steve. Now, is there a representative of Generations here to speak to us? Well, Donna, are you, are you here representing Generations?
No, no, I had a question. I'm just in line for questions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, Mayor, if I could.
Well, okay, since I'm not seeing anyone here from Generations, we have their proposal. I'll start to take public comments and questions, and Alan, you've got your hand up first, so go on ahead.
Thank you. Again, I wanted to thank you all again. I just wanted to read this to you because I think it can really help you folks. I was going to ask you, Mayor, and Mike, if you're already part of this. So it says, "The D8CD staff has been working with Vermont Emergency Management Chief Recovery Office and Consultant Guide House on gathering information and developing the state's CDBG-DR program to prepare the draft action plan to be submitted to HUD in order to access the funding, and it can be found below." So it sounds like this could be a great program for the CCR, and hopefully Sabans as well. I just wanted to make sure that folks are really taking heed of this. It says, "Pump up comments are being accepted on the action plan until May 21, 2025." And it just sounds like a wonderful opportunity, and so I was going to ask, is the city participating in this or trying to get in line for some of these monies to do the CCR?
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Steve?
Steve Whitaker. Yes, the city's participating. There was a big event here in the downstairs room, but the action plan wasn't ready then. So the action plan was sent out today, so I forwarded it to a few of you. But I think fundamentally, if this is the way the city does planning, it's no wonder that developers look elsewhere. I mean, we, there is an existing use of that building, and it's an essential emergency use that is going to arise again this coming fall. We're going to kick everybody out next week, and then come winter, the state has already kicked people out, and the city is going to say, "Oops, we made that building unavailable." We, I mean, I think it's irresponsible to not have a plan for where we're going to put the unhoused people next winter to be entertaining any consideration for this building. I know it's a good building. I know there's competition for it. But the real issue with Country Club Road is our miserably poor planning because the traffic, we have refused to do a traffic analysis of what that intersection could... We may find we allow a pickleball club and a daycare center up there, and then, oops, that's the capacity. Sorry about the housing, you know, forget it, Montpelier people who bought it. We're not, we can't afford to put any housing up there because the trip generation can't handle it. The intersection can't handle it. There's no guarantee that we're going to be allowed permission to put another road in or that we can afford one if it's $10 or $20 million. So this is, this is going to directly impede a, the master planning process that we need to do for Country Club Road, and it may preclude our getting the TIP. If you don't have a spreadsheet that shows the grand list value paying back the taxes of the TIP you borrowed for infrastructure, you don't get the TIP. And if you put, you know, a tennis club and a daycare up there that uses up all the traffic capacity, you're not going to have any housing. So I'm just saying that this needs to be approached. I mean, there's no harm in granting one-year leases for the Turtle Island emergency. There is harm in putting a 50- or 99-year lease in before we know what the value of that lease is because we don't know how many customers we're going to house up there. So I'm just, I'm pointing out that that we cannot afford to put anchors, 50-year, 100-year anchors in there before we've completed the Phase 2 design. I don't hear any commitment on the council to even heed the advice we paid top dollar for from White and Burke, which is to begin the Phase 2 design. And we're going to skip over it? We're going to let one subcommittee that hasn't met yet do the Phase 2 design in a week? That's not, that's not Phase 2 design.
Thank you, Steve. Mark, do you have a response to that?
I just wanted to add something more.
Very quickly, please.
I want to emphasize that what Turtle Island is asking for is an urgent need. We all know the need for daycare, childcare, early education. We have to relocate. This is our way of keeping a footprint inside the city of Montpelier. That keeps some kids in Montpelier, that keeps jobs in Montpelier. And I think what Phoebe said, I want to emphasize again, this is, this is a launch. We see this as a way to keep ourselves established here, and we want to grow on that. Turtle Island wants to expand. We want to offer more childcare. But we need to reestablish ourself, the physical location, to do that. And we are, the long-range plan, we would mention that, I think in our proposal was mentioned, possible building, building up there. You know, we would be open to the possibilities and suggestions. And one of the reasons we're here now is because this building is a resource, and it's there. And we can move in right now. We are ready to go. We have the admin staff, very experienced. We're an established business. We have a great reputation. We've been here for decades. We have literally a top-shelf teaching staff that is committed to this school, very little turnover. We have a very active board, Board of Directors, who has shown up all through. Phoebe, Jocelyn, me, everybody has shown up to move this school into position for the future. So we are ready to go. We would be open to other opportunities. But right now, we have to reestablish, we want to keep our school open, and we'd like to keep it open, at least in part in Montpelier.
Thanks, Mark. Donna Bates. Thank you for joining us. Good to see you, or it will be as soon as your camera's on.
Yeah, well, it's a little unstable, so I'm not in person all the time, but thank you very much. And I just have to reiterate that you got to take the steps now where you want to be. The Turtle Island is a very established, very well-recognized and needed resource in the community. We had a chance five, six years ago, back probably even four years ago, again, had a chance to put an organization into that building that had a future vision that paralleled the cities. And the hub, I think, is there. They keep showing up, trying to offer the city services and resources. And I would just really, really encourage the council to say, yes, we could have been having this relationship started a half a dozen years ago. Instead, we haven't. And so, yes, the homelessness, we definitely need to address that, but that's not the best location because it's not in town. They need to be where they don't need transportation so heavily. So I really support the Turtle Island and the hub combination, and we can get out of anything that we agree to. We can watch the print, but have the staff start negotiating because something should be happening there. The economy shows us it's going to take more time than anticipated, as we've already learned, to ever have significant development there, but the land shouldn't be sitting idle. So please, look forward. Say yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Kelly, do we have any information about the homelessness issue there?
Just that, you know, currently, the lease that we have with Bittern Haven to run the winter shelter is just a one-year, ends at the end of May lease. And so certainly, we would talk with them a little bit more about that. But I'm not sure what is available for public consumption at this time, but there are developments with Bittern Haven and working on, you know, maybe having a permanent space within the city. So we are having those conversations.
I'd like to see that. So Jim?
I got a message from Alan here who says he was cut off and had two more comments. And I didn't really see, hear any three-minute timer go off, so I think you ought to give him a little chance to finish what he had to say.
Well, that's fine. I thought he was done. Alan, if you could move quickly through your other comments.
Actually, Mayor, you already did give me the chance. That was an older email. Thank you.
Okay.
I would just say the last thing.
Thanks, Alan.
I believe there is one more comment, sir. I was told that there's going to be a Planning Commission special meeting next Monday to talk about the difficulties of being a developer in the community. I just wanted to verify. Is that happening and what time, please?
Mike, do you have the answer to that?
It's not a special meeting. It's their regular meeting. It starts at 5:30.
Thanks. So folks, where are we? Does anyone have a motion to make? Ben?
I make a motion that we offer our city staff to enter into negotiations with the hub in Turtle Island.
Second.
Any further discussion? Carrie?
I'm, I would love to see Turtle Island there tomorrow. And it's clear to me from the proposal that Turtle Island is ready to go. They have everything that they need to move in, to be successful, and to take advantage of the opportunity to be there for a short, relatively short period of time as a transition to move on to something that's going to better suit them. Maybe that would be up at the site. I think that would be great, but that's to be determined. The hub feels more insecure to me, and I just have to flag that this phrase, "The public-private partnership", has been coming up my entire time on the city council, and every time it comes up, I say, "What does that mean? Can someone explain to me what that means?" Have not gotten an explanation. Don't know what that means, other than I think what it means is that we give them a really good price on the rent, and they make money off of it. And I think we need much more discussion than that. I would be a lot more comfortable with the hub being there if it were treated much more as to, not as a partnership, but as, "We're going to make space available to you, a separate organization. You're going to run your business. You're going to do what you want to do, and the city is going to charge a reasonable amount of rent, whatever that is." So those are my qualms, and so I don't, I don't think I'm going to vote yes on this because of that, unless the, unless the motion can be very clear that it's, that we're not necessarily going to be holding those negotiations to the terms of the proposals that were submitted, because I'm not comfortable with the terms of the proposal.
Just to clarify my motion, you know, it's for the city staff to enter into negotiations on two separate leases, with the best interests of the city in mind.
And that's what I understand is to be in my second, that this is just moving them forward. They're going to look at their language. They're going to take, probably say, "We don't like some of the language", and they're going to discuss it with these people. Is that okay? Yeah, see, they're going to discuss it with these people, and we're going to work out what we might want to take out, and they'll be talking prices. This is just to move it forward, but you say you want to move it forward. Let's move it forward.
Adrian?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that they'll have an opportunity to review leases so we can look at the, all the fine details to ensure at that point we can make amendments.
Yeah, I can, Carrie, I can say that we've heard, over the years, we've heard requests from the hub about how much rent they should pay and all that. But we, we've never made any promises to them that they're giving, about getting a subsidized rate or a reduced rate. And that certainly would be one of the terms that we'd be looking at when this comes back before us. Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that we're giving direction to staff. We're basically telling you, "Go negotiate something that seems good", but you can't just do that without some guidance from us. And the only guidance that you currently have is what's in these proposals. And I, it's not a matter of trust. I totally trust the staff to come up with something good. But what I feel like we're, we're doing is sending you off saying, "Go work out something with Turtle Island and the hub", regardless of what's in these proposals already, and I, I'm not comfortable with that. So if, I, I'm okay with this moving forward and having conversations and you coming back to us with something, but not what's in this proposal as far as the hub goes. As far as Turtle Island goes, great, I'm all there, but not, I'm not okay with the direction that the hub is going. So I, I'm not sure how we, how the council directs staff to negotiate a lease.
Thank you, Carrie. It's really helpful because, I mean, one of the things that I was going to ask for is just a bit of clarity around, you know, how and what to bring back. And so getting clarity on there being, you know, two leases is really helpful because then I think we can kind of work with the, both proposals as the basis for that conversation. And so the piece that I'm kind of hanging on a little bit in this motion is in the best interest of the city. And so trying to make sure that, you know, what we're looking to bring back would be in alignment with what is in the visioning plan that we put forward as well. You know, so making sure that, you know, that kind of comports with the proposal that would come forward. So in terms of working with both entities, we'll do just that. And, you know, I think that's why as staff, we were kind of prioritizing one portion of the proposal, not because we are, you know, trying to put one in front of the other, it's just that one has a really direct need right now. And so we wanted to make sure that we can bring that one forward, and hearing that we have two leases, we can do just that. I think with the hub, we need to work together. I mean, we started those conversations. We've got to pick them back up. And so what I'm hopeful for is that, you know, what they've put forward at this point is the basis of that conversation, but there will be more to come with that. And so the proposals that we bring back, you know, they may not come back together. You know, they may come back, you know, one and then the other. And we may seek clarity and guidance to make sure that we don't bring something that, you know, is not favorable. And actually, likely, we will seek guidance.
Folks, are we ready for a vote? The motion, we have the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. opposed?
I'm going to vote no.
All right. Thanks, Carrie. I always value what you have to say. All right, folks, it is, we're a little past our 8:30 break, so we have a break for 10 minutes. All right, we are back. And the next item up is the discussion of East State Street reconstruction.
Good evening. I'm your monitor, Director of Public Works. Tonight is Corey Line, our project management director, and Evan Dietrich with the VHB, the consultant working with us on the streetscape.
And Card, if you could try to keep your voice up, that would be very helpful.
Sure. So tonight, what we wanted to talk about was the streetscape on East State Street. So streetscape is essentially sidewalks, bike lanes, roadway, trees, lighting. But really, the focus tonight is specifically on the extent of the sidewalk reconstruction as well as the addition of a bike lane. Obviously, we're also doing utility work. East State Street is a full reconstruction, new water pipes, new sewer pipes, storm system. But that's really pretty straightforward for us as staff to design that. What we really need input from staff on is the hardscape, the final surface work. So just where we're at at the moment, currently, Contract 1, which is the run between Main Street and Rialto Bridge, that's currently under construction. Obviously, there's quite a bit of activity downtown. It's a very deep excavation. And the purpose of Contract 1 is really to separate the stormwater out of the sewer system. So we're putting a brand-new stormwater outfall all the way from the bottom of East State Street out to the bridge. The East State Street was separated. Stormwater was taken out of the sewer system back in the 90s, but there was nowhere to put it when they got to the bottom, so it went back to the sewer system. So this project is finishing out what was started back in the 90s and actually taking it completely out of the sewer and out to the river directly. Also, in Phase 1 is a fairly elaborate stormwater treatment system that's required for what's called a redevelopment of East State, which will be the Contract 2. called a redevelopment of East State, which will be the Contract Two, that we're going to talk about more in detail tonight. With a large part of the cost of the work we're doing now is related to stormwater treatment, approximately $1.1 million. So Contract Two, which is the main focus for tonight, is, like I mentioned, reconstruction of the water system, wastewater system, the stormwater system, as well as roadway sidewalks and bike lane improvements. And this project will extend all the way from Main Street up to College, so the entire length of East State Street. And currently, the status right now is plumerian design. What we're looking for tonight is some input from council so that we can advance to the next step, final design of this project. I'll turn it over to Corey here for these details.
We just wanted to go over some of the characteristics of East State Street, so we don't get acclimated and know what we're talking about. The classification is a major collector, state classification. Technically, the definition of a collector is that it empties into and receives traffic from a major arterial. Main Street is a major arterial, so by definition, it is a major collector. But it actually has a lot of local road qualities as well. Local road is where your origins and destinations are. If you look at East State Street, bottom hat, the bottom quarter is surrounded by the downtown district, a lot of access points, access to parking, downtown parking businesses, a lot of residential units, multi-unit residential units that go up. East State Street, you have the elementary school around the corner and the college campus at the top. So it really serves this dual function. And because it has this dual function, you have all of these uses. Cars, pedestrians, bikes, even not shown here. It's a public transit street. So it serves the public transit community as well. I'll get a slide on that later with the design. Like I said, just to get acclimated, downtown district at the bottom, elementary school around the corner, college, fine arts, campus. I know there's a lot of changes going on that for the north. And so we wanted to put this in here to remind everyone about Act 34, the Police Streets Act. So I wanted to be careful how we describe it. Basically, what it is, is it assures that all users are being considered for a project like this. The process we've gone through, tonight's conversation, consideration of all users, compliance with this law. It does not require any, you have to build X, Y, and Z. When it comes to implementing this, whatever considerations are made, there are exemptions. Unpaid road doesn't apply. Pedestrians and bicyclists are prohibited, doesn't apply. We are reconstructing the street from the bottom up, so it's difficult to imagine something is outside of the school. Really, the applicable one for this project possibly is that the investment is disproportionate to the potential use. And so we have some transportation plans. And so the top one, Mount Hillier motion, what that does, it sets a goal for the community to become more walkable, more bikeable, more accessible. And what it says is, you're going to be, if you're going to consider all uses and you want to be more walkable, bikeable, accessible, here are some things you should dig deeper into. So that's what we were tasked with by the council and the team with BHB to do is to investigate, what would it take to put sidewalks on both sides for the entire length and accommodate cyclists with an uphill bike lane? So I think Evan's going to take us through.
Okay, you're looking at the conceptual plans that BHB came up with for this project, following along the direction that the city has given us to meet the planning studies that have been done before and the city's optimum go-out of East State Street. So this, of course, is the downtown section. And today, there is parking on the north side of the street. So north is up here in this sketch. There is parking on the north side of the street, and there is a bus stop currently on the north side of the street as well. On the south side of the street, there is no bike lane or parking presently, and there's a bus stop sign right here near the crosswalk, but there's no bus stop today. The sidewalks are fairly wide, about 10 feet wide, and they go to the faces of the building. So what we wanted to accomplish with this project is to replace the two lanes of travel and the parking on the north side, but then add the uphill bike lane for eastbound travelers, so that we have a dedicated bike lane that would get the bikes out of the uphill traffic. So it's a fairly steep street, right? Downhill, bicyclists can ride with traffic pretty safely, pretty easily. Going up the hill, it's a little bit different story. So we would like to get an uphill bike lane that's separated to get bicyclists out of the way of motor vehicles. So this is the first block here. We think that there's probably an opportunity to add something more of a bus stop on the south side as well, which we would look at more in final design. But we hope to get, today, the buses just stopped right in the travel lane. We would hope to get them at least partially out of the travel lane with this future plan, so that you have a dedicated bus stop on both sides as you go up the hill. So this typical section would continue basically all the way up to College Street, all the way along. So the next block, the downtown parking does continue. So this is the metered parking here. The uphill bike lane continues, and we have the two travel lanes. So it's fairly narrow for the travel lanes, nine-and-a-half-foot travel lanes in both directions, an eight-foot parking lane, and a five-foot bike lane, which are more or less the minimums that we can go with for this type of road and for these types of lanes. We do replace the sidewalks on both sides in addition to adding the bike lane. And of course, we're going to rebuild the pavement, re-strike the road. That's all part of the utility project that's already going to be going on. So this typical does continue up the hill. And a lot of you may know that in this area here, there is that large block granite retaining wall, it's about 10 feet tall on the south side of the road, right? So we don't affect that. In fact, there's that kind of undeveloped grass strip between the sidewalk today and that wall. It grows up a lot in the summer. We would try to get rid of that and bring the sidewalk right to the face of the wall, so it would be a much cleaner look. But we wouldn't affect the wall at all. So that wall would stay, and we'd go right by it with our sidewalk and our bike lane. In this area, the utility poles also are, they're kind of in the curb or in the street or a little bit in the sidewalk. We have initial conversations with GMP, and we believe we will be able to relocate those poles slightly so that they all fall just behind the curb line. And we would have a sidewalk that's wide enough to have the sidewalk plows go by, but then still not really cause this great disruption to the utility poles by moving them, say, to the other side of the street. We think we can keep them probably where, more or less where they are today. But we would rebuild the sidewalks and add the bike lane and continue, in this case, the un-metered parking as it is today, up past Hubbard Street. And that would continue on. When we get to Hubbard, of course, there is a very steep bank that drops off to the south, to the backyards of these homes on the lower street down here. So as we widen the street with the bike lane, and this is where we begin no sidewalk today on the south side. So in this typical section, we add the bike lane and we add the sidewalk. And that means that we somehow have to retain that slope, because we push that out farther to the south, and then it just drops off right to those backyards. So today, there is, been retaining walls down here, kind of in the woods behind the houses, that do retain some of the slope. We wouldn't touch those. But up at the top of the hill, right off the sidewalk, we would put in another retaining wall. And that could be like a ready rock wall perhaps, or driving in piles to keep that a more slender section. And we'd have to look at that in final design, what we want to do there. But for some portion of this, in this case, about 320 feet long, all along this block here, we would put in this wall to support the sidewalk and the bike lane. And of course, at the back of the sidewalk, there would be a fence, because there would be a wall that would drop down to the lower elevations behind it. So continuing on, the retaining wall does continue up the ways. Then we get into the where the properties are pretty close to the street, same on the other side. But still, we could fit all of that in the, in the space that we have. You can see, these lines here are the right-of-way lines. So it's, it's pretty generous on the north side, not quite so generous on the south side. But basically, the improvements would be occurring within the right-of-way for the most part, if not entirely. And again, we would look at that more closely in final design. But that typical section does continue up. And under this scenario, where we have the full build-out on both sides, we would likely have to add a retaining wall now on the high side. So this is the, the kind of brick mansion property up here that sits up above the road. And there's a fairly steep bank that goes up to that building. So as we widen out the street a bit, rather than cutting back this slope and really laying that back to a large extent, we think it would likely be more efficient to put in a retaining wall similar to the style on the other side. But in this case, we're retaining a slope that goes up rather than a slope that goes down. And that would continue up to the driveway that goes up to that building. So this would get, of course, it wouldn't be as tall at this end. It's quite a bit taller at the west end, rather. And this typical section continues along. We likely would have another retaining wall just next to Bingham Street, just so we're not spilling out. This property is down, instead of being up on a hill, this property is now down lower again. So we could end up with another small retaining wall through here to retain the sidewalk between Bingham and West Street. And then we would continue up to College Street with the same typical section the whole way. So this is the full build-out as envisioned under the master planning studies that Corey mentioned. Yes, sir?
Can you back that off one second? Where the houses were? Yeah, right there. So our right-of-way goes into the houses?
Well, you never know with the aerial imagery exactly where things are, because it can be a little distorted. But this shows that the right-of-way does come at least right to the front of the building. I don't know that it necessarily went through the building, but that's what the aerial would show.
Interesting.
Yeah. It would, it's quite close to those homes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there is wider right-of-way on the north sidewalk through the section. And that's been researched by the city. All right. And then that's the same all the way up to College. So then, alternatively, downtown, just as we get out of the downtown business district and we get into these multi-unit houses in here that Corey mentioned, it's pretty tight between one side and the other, right? There isn't a whole lot of room to work there. So with the full build-out that I was talking about, we do go right through people's steps and close to the porches. So we would really have to dig into the details during final design to determine whether or not we could carry the bike lane all the way through here, or if it would really be necessary to not include the bike lane for this first section, which seems to be okay because it's not nearly as steep as the rest of the road, right? It's a flatter section, so bikes could potentially ride with traffic. It wouldn't be the worst thing to happen. But we would take a closer look at that in final design. But once we got by, is it Cedar Street here? Once we get by Cedar Street, then we would reintroduce this bike lane, and then that would continue just like the first set of plans that I showed you, where we would have the uphill bike lane going all the way up to the college. So this is an option here that we would look at more closely. We would hope to get the bike lane all the way through, but it may not just be possible in this downtown section. And we did a couple renderings here, what this might look like. This is the big State of Vermont building here. You can kind of see it fitting into the character of the neighborhood, and then we have a street view as well. So that's what it looks like going up the hill. So you've got the bike lane going uphill. Downhill, you've got parking lane, bikes ride with traffic, sidewalks on both sides, utility poles relocated slightly to be just behind the curb line, as I described.
And are you, keep going, okay.
Oh, we got more.
Good. I thought so.
Just a quick mention of another component of this project. There will be new trees installed, particularly now down by the downtown portion. And one of the unique things we're trying to accomplish, we're working with the Parks Department and the State of Vermont and UVM to develop a pilot system to get treat pits essentially approved as a stormwater treatment practice. I mentioned in Contract One, we're spending well over a million dollars for stormwater treatment on this because, well, part because trees are not currently improvemented. So what we're going to try to do is develop sample ports upstream and downstream of the treat pit, see how much phosphorus is removed as part of the project. So hopefully, this will become something that we can use on future projects as well. So now the money. As Corey mentioned, we were tasked to go, it's been quite a while since we've been to council. Had a couple floods and things like that. Got us sidetracked away from this project, but we're, we're back now. When we last came to council, we discussed the full build-out option. And what we were directed to do is, is to explore that fully and see what it would cost. And then come back to council with a recommendation. So that is option one, is the full build with the bike lane, with sidewalks on both sides of the road, just like our plans, our master plans sort of recommend. That total project cost is $9 million, so $2 million of that is attributed to the addition of bike lane and the new sidewalks. So that, I want to back up for one second. So this project is, is, has a bond of $7.2 million. But we also have a loan from USDA, and that loan is combined for both the wastewater plant project and East State Street, with a $3.5 million grant that the city can use for either, either East State or wastewater plant or some combination. So we've got flexibility in how the grant funds are used. We also have a $1.2 million ARPA grant that is being applied solely to Contract One. That is specific to our CSO separation. So if you look at our, our total available funding, we have $8.7 million if we were to take all of the $3.5 million USDA grant, as well as the $1.2 million and our $7.2 million bond. What we have after you take out Contract One is $8.7 million available Option one, what we just described, is $9 million. So if council wanted to move forward with that option, we would have to go back to bond. We don't have enough money to do that without additional bond approval. So then we looked at, we don't really want to go back to bond as staff, as a recommendation for a couple reasons. You know, costs are escalating. We also, we want to advance this project to ensure that our, the funding through USDA does not get jeopardized. So the faster we advance this work, the better, the more solid ground we are for maintaining our USDA funding. But if that, if council wanted to do that, that's certainly something we could do. It would just delay the final design process, because we want to wait until we got that bond approval. So then, option two is a scaled-back version. So basically, it would be, we would still retain the bike lane for the entire length of the project. And we would put back the existing sidewalks that are there, and we would add one section of sidewalk, basically from Hubbard Street up to that crosswalk that we showed you earlier. And that's kind of one of the main gaps. So then we could essentially eliminate a mid-block crosswalk that potentially, which tend to be less safe, we want. It's ideal to have crosswalks or that intersection for stop control locations. So option two, just to summarize, full bike lane and then one sidewalk gap addition, as well as putting back the sidewalks that are there currently. That price is $8.2 million. So that'll give us a half a million dollar contingency on the project. And option three is basically just put back what's there. No bike lane, no new sidewalks, just exactly as is. And that, that price is $7 million.
So Kurt, if we could maybe look back at the, at the view of the street, under option two, would there still be some gap on the sidewalk where someone walking all the way up or down would have to cross to the, from the north side, south side to the north side or vice versa to, to do the whole trip?
Yeah, but, so this, this is kind of the summary slide of option two. And the dark gray hatching there is the new sidewalk. Sort of the tan colors are existing sidewalks. So we'd be closing in, you know, that gap, basically from that, reference the mid-block crosswalk there.
But there's still?
Yeah.
But that's still the gap?
That's the gap that we would be proposing to fill under option two.
Okay.
The only new sidewalk added. So you'd still have a space up from College Street to that point, though. So you'd still have a space up from College Street to that point.
So it would be on the south side you're talking, the gap?
The gap is being filled.
We would be filling the gap on the, on the south side.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
This would take away all the money for your wastewater?
We would be utilizing USDA grant money fully for East State Street.
And what is the need of, is there a need at the wastewater?
So for the wastewater plant project, it was before, I think you joined the council, but we reduced the scope of that project because we had originally planned to do what's called a bio-solids dryer. The estimate from that, for that equipment went from 16 million to 32. So it was way outside our available budget. So we actually have, we're estimating now around 10 and a half million for that project. We have $16 million available bond authorization. So there's a lot of room financially on that project for, sorry, bond approval.
And I'm curious where on the project the street's going to be widened and what the effect is? Is it being widened the whole length or, or not?
The existing street kind of varies in the width and then this provides consistent width. So there is some widening on one side or both sides. There's, I don't think any place where there's no widening. So it's, it's a mix of some widening on one side or some widening on both sides. And that, when I say some widening, that is around four feet or five feet. In a, in a section like we're looking at here, between Hubbard and the crosswalk, that would be more, you would have the bike lane and the sidewalk. That's varied now or through there today, right? So that's more than 10.
Through what, through what section?
Through the section we just talked about for option two.
With the gap in the sidewalk thing?
Yeah, with the gap in the sidewalk thing, right.
And you would split that on each, either side? Or you would, earlier you were talking about a retaining wall to accommodate both the sidewalk and the bike lane on the south side. But that would be what, 10 feet?
Yeah.
Oh, and that's, that would be the plan, is to do it all there on the south side and not move the sidewalk on the north side?
I would have to review the plans. I don't know that we pushed the sidewalk on the north side out much. I think we accounted for most of the widening on the south side here. And again, these are conceptual plans, so it is subject to change. But we would have to look more closely at that and see what the best fit is and what the impacts are. When we were first laying this out, we weren't really quite sure about the right-of-way. And then we did find out that the right-of-way on the north side is quite a bit wider. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that we have cart launch to just widen on the north side because we have more right-of-way. We have to be sensitive to the property impacts, no matter which side we go to. So we would work with DPW when we got into final design to really come into the fine details of the widening.
But north of that crosswalk above 79, number 79 there, yeah, north of that or east of that on the north side.
Yeah.
You're locked in on the south pretty much, aren't you? Because the stoops and stairs of those houses are within a few feet of this.
It's quite tight, yeah.
Yeah, so most of the 10 feet, it looks like you need about at least 10 feet up there. It's about 27 feet wide, curve to curve, I think. And you need something like 37, right?
No, the tightest spot is between Hubbard and the houses and the crosswalk. Basically, once you get to the crosswalk, which it does exist today, then there is sidewalk on this side already, right? So you don't have to add that one. You're adding a bike lane.
Bike lane and a sidewalk on the other side?
Yeah, the sidewalk on the other side. If you were to add that like an alternative one, then that does get added to the north side. So you have widening then on both sides. The 10 feet is split between the two sides. We're talking about option two.
And in option two?
Option two does, does give a sidewalk on the north side.
Yeah.
And so that saves us the retaining wall on the north side also?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, actually, I mean, what I'm saying is that the sidewalk is there on the south side.
Right.
Above the crosswalk.
Yep.
But if you're adding a five-foot bike lane, then you're pushing the travel lanes. What I'm saying is from the curb of the sidewalk now to the curb on the other side is 27 feet or 28. I skipped it off toe to heel. So I'm not exact. And you need something like 37. To fit in everything, bike lane, two nine-and-a-half foot travel lanes and an eight-foot parking lane. And a sidewalk. On the north.
The curb to curb, the section you're talking about, would be 32, right? Nine and a half, nine and a half.
My feet are smaller than I think they are. Okay.
So you're expanding from 27 or 28 to 32, curb to curb.
You're adding, well, you're adding 10 feet, right? You're adding a five-foot sidewalk on one side and a five-foot.
There's a sidewalk on the section you're talking about.
On the south side. There's nothing on the north side. No, on the north of this.
Uphill is that?
Right. The option two only recommends the existing sidewalk that's there and no additional sidewalk on that hillside like we're looking at.
Right, okay, yeah, option two, sure.
Right.
Yeah, the full build would.
Right, okay, I'm sorry. You were talking about, I apologize, sorry.
Is there any, is there any opportunity for utilities to be varied? Does that make sense? Or nobody wants to do that anymore or what? Is that what's spent here?
Those numbers approach a lot higher, those financial numbers. Evan probably hesitates. But varied lines, in some cases, but it's very prohibitively expensive to do that. So how it works is that GMP will relocate these poles, if we ask them to, for overhead lines at their own cost. But if you want to put things underground, then you have to pay the difference between what that costs to put everything underground and what it would have cost them to move things aero-ly. And it's very expensive to do that.
I had a feeling.
Millions of dollars, even on this half-mile stretch it would be.
Really?
Yeah, it's millions of dollars. And we did talk to GMP about that potential here too. And they said that is not something they would want to do at this location because of the nature of the infrastructure that they have here. It would not be something they would like to do. It's not that type of line. They are trying to do that in other parts of the state where, so you don't have the storm damages. And they are trying to do that. But in this case, it's not an area they would want to do that because of the different connections that they have.
Council members, any other questions? Well, another question that just occurs to me, looking at option two, you know, I think it's very important to have as much sidewalk as possible. Having people have to cross a couple of times is, is not good. Well, okay.
Option two does give you the sidewalk on the south side.
Yeah.
From Maine to College, the whole way. So on option two, there's a sidewalk from the intersection at the bottom of the hill all the way up to the top. That's right.
Is there an option two A without the bike lane? I know, do we know what the cost is to remove the bike lane, restore everything and add a continuous sidewalk on the south side? I didn't see a cost for that, but I might have missed it.
You did miss it. If you, if you look at option two in the 1.2 million, I think we figured it out to be about half of that. So the sidewalk and the bike lane kind of split that for, for the most part. It's not drastically one way or the other, it's pretty close. So that 1.2 would be the option, so what you're talking about, that 1.2 would be split in half and it'd be, you know, 600,000, 700,000.
Adrian?
Whole bunch of details today, so I just want to make sure to ask some of those questions. So just make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So at the, as you approach College, those houses are right on that sidewalk already? So we're just replacing that sidewalk? We're not moving closer into their people's houses?
Not true.
Okay.
When we add the bike lane, the sidewalk does get a bit closer. It's in the neighborhood of four or five feet. So we would have to work with the property owners to reconfigure the steps and things like that. Yep, they are close. Yeah, they are close.
Okay, I'm not seeing any questions, more questions from council right now or they could very well be questions. I do see hands raised online and also in the room. So I'll start with Andy Bouton online.
Yes, hello, thanks. I'm a resident up at 104 East State Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, just fine.
Okay. My question is regarding parking along East State Street. I think it's about from 77 on the west side all the way up to College, but for sure from West Street to College Street. Does the incorporation of the bike lane do away with all of the street-side parking on the west side of the street that's currently there?
So, no, it doesn't. The options, both options retain parking throughout the entire length of the street. What it does is shifts it to the north side from the crosswalk up to College Street. So right now from the crosswalk to College Street, it's on the south side. It would shift it to the north side. But all options, the full build, it retains parking throughout the entire length of the street.
Andy, is that it for your question?
Yeah, I guess I just don't, I don't see that parking in these plans as I saw it laid out in the downtown section. And I, I just question the, the width and, and, you know, the width of the buildup here with the bike lanes and the sidewalks and, and that. And again, I mean, no opposition whatsoever. This is just point of clarity from, from my perspective and that's all.
Thanks. Jocelyn?
Hi, thank you. My name is Jocelyn Wilcheck. I live on Saban Street. I've walked up and down this road since 2005. We absolutely need a new sidewalk where there's none today. Looking at this slide where it goes on the old Primmer property where I used to work. I'm an attorney, I work, it's 100 East State Street. And the reason why is, and I have a recommendation, the existing sidewalk that we're looking at now today that's tightly in front of all those homes between this crosswalk you see on the slide towards College Street is unusable in the winter, especially with freeze thaw conditions. Because even though it's on the south side, it's facing north. And what happens is you get a warm day and then with the shade from the houses and it's facing north, it ices up. I'm probably walking in the middle of the road most of the time on a winter day. What I would rec, it's completely unsafe. And my neighbors are also doing the same thing. What I would recommend, if you, I would like to see sidewalks on both sides, but I also understand not wanting to go out for a bond. I would eliminate the sidewalk that's there today that's tightly against those homes. Those people aren't going to be happy. And it's also not a safe sidewalk. You have people in and out of those driveways. Sightline distances can be difficult if there's like a big SUV in the car. So I would eliminate that sidewalk that's there today. It's also difficult to navigate and I think it will be with the new sidewalk because you need angles built because of the driveways. And when it gets icy, there's a slant and you're like sliding down. So I would eliminate that sidewalk and I would put the new sidewalk on the 100 East State Street property where you have no driveway. So you don't have those traffic issues. You're not going to be dealing with five or six landowners taking up their property. I know in a perfect world, we would have sidewalks on both sides. But I would also eliminate, to save money, that new sidewalk on the south side from Hubbard Street. So you'd basically be walking down East State Street on the north, the north sidewalk which faces south, so it's going to get more light and you have less driveways and less homes to deal with. And then go to your, your double sidewalk when you get closer to town past Hubbard Street. So I, I haven't been hit by a car yet. I don't want to be, but it's super sketchy in the winter. So thank you for all your work. And so that's what I suggest, basically flipping the sidewalks up top and saving money not going all the way down both sides. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks, Jocelyn. John Anderson?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I, I'm old and I, I assume you can't see me. I haven't been, I haven't been able to figure out how to make it so you can see me. I'm, but I, I do have some comments. Betsy and I started, bought property in this neighborhood maybe 40 years ago. We have lovingly restored about five buildings on East State Street. We still own three of them and two of the, and they're an important part of our retirement. The, the comments, I think, the, I, I would like to begin by talking about the survey issue and the right-of-way issue. The right-of-way, I have mowed lawns in that neighborhood for more than 40 years. I know where the survey pins are and they are not through the cellar of the buildings that I own. They're not in the cellar of the buildings that I own. I've looked at some of the, some of the survey information and it's, I have done survey litigation and what I see of that survey would not pass muster. I wouldn't, I wouldn't support it and I wouldn't offer it in a court. I can show you, I've offered three years ago to show you, to show the city where the, where the survey pins are. And for some reason that my offer has been ignored and you have a survey that's defective. The, the actual line of the, for the, for the, for the boundary is just a little bit, I guess it's north of the sidewalk, enough space to allow snow to be plowed. But there, if you go any wider on the north side, you will be encroaching into lands that the property owners own on the north side. Now having, I'm surprised that the consultant doesn't have a ready answer as to the amount of land that would be the encroachment that would be made into the properties on the north side. Because I went over that with Corey and it is four feet closer to the buildings than, than, than they are now. If you take out four feet of, if you put under McAdam or concrete, four feet of sidewalk, or four feet closer to those buildings, you have essentially destroyed all of the green space in front of those buildings. And frankly, I don't know, there's at least one of my accesses that, that I don't know how you reslope it to, to make it continue to function. There are.
John, that was just your three-minute beeper. I don't know if you heard that, but.
Yeah, well, look, you know, there's so much here that needs, that needs to be discussed.
Yeah, I'm not cutting, John, I'm not cutting you off. I'm just reminding you that it would be. I'm just reminding you that it would be good to approach a close.
Yeah, okay. And I guess I'll do that, but I, I'll do that. I would know a couple of other things, though. The number of bicycles that are shown, that are, that the city says go up and down here are two bicycles up and two bicycles down every hour. I'm not sure why you would take the front lawns and destroy the green space of, of at least the properties that, in, in this area for that level of bicycle traffic. I'll just, I will also say that the, we own land in front of 77, it, or we own the land at 77. That land is about 10 feet wider than, than any, it extends about 10 feet farther out into the street than any other property. I acquired that in order to make some changes to that building or to that property. And I just don't see how the city, how you can do the plan that you want to do without, without taking my land on that side of the street and destroying the green space. So I'll stop there.
Thanks, John. Now, we have people in the room. Eve, why don't you come up?
Hi, I'm Eve Jacobs Carnahan and I live on Saban Street for many, many, many years. I walked down the hill every day to work downtown and I also, I continue to do that for other reasons to go downtown. And then I was also on the pedestrian committee. So, which, like 10 years ago. So we've been talking about the need to improve walking access on East State Street for a really long time. And one of the issues, the same issue that Jocelyn Wilcheck brought up, is that the section, when you're coming downhill from West Street to the crosswalk, it is unusable. Just like Jocelyn, I always would walk in the street in the winter because it is treacherously icy. And I have, I am very sensitive to the concern about the costs of putting in all of these things. I wish we could do all of it. If you have to compromise, I would suggest that you prioritize creating a sidewalk and safety instead of the bike lanes, even though I also bike up that hill. And the other thing is I would prioritize the which sidewalks. So to be more specific, so looking at the recommendation here, that top section is shown there, version, option two would have you put sidewalk on the south side from Hubbard Street to the crosswalk. I don't think that's necessary because right now it's plenty safe to walk on the north side there. And most people really do know in advance to be walking on that side of the street to walk up there. And so they don't have to cross over to the north side until they get to that crosswalk. But it, but what I would say is from that crosswalk up to West Street is the part that's super, super icy. So that is the sidewalk I would add. I would forget about adding the one that option two would put in. And I would also point out that if you're moving, because that's, because the sidewalk on the north side there, on the south side is unusable in the winter. So you'd be adding one in the part that makes it usable. And so then that's safer. And the other thing is if you're going to put the parking all moved to that side where 100 East State Street is and there's no sidewalk there, how are those people going to get out of their cars safely? So I think that's a contradiction that isn't really being addressed. So you'd have the added benefit of putting the sidewalk on the side where the cars are so that people can get out. And just as a general sort of bigger principle thing about why we should care about pedestrians is because if we want, we know we have all these parking problems downtown. Like there are days in the winter where I will drive downtown because I don't want to walk on the sidewalk. But if I had a clear sidewalk, I would walk. And that's probably true of a lot of other people. And then the only other thing, because I hear the timer went off, is that, to mention again, that it's not just adults walking to work, there's a whole slew of neighborhood kids that walk to Union Elementary School or walk to the high school and have to go down there until you're asking them also to walk on a super icy sidewalk. So I, I think there's a way to solve that problem within the budget.
Thanks, Eve. Chris.
I can attest, Ms. Carnahan, as a frequent pedestrian on East State Street, as I work on my 68th, my name is Chris Owen, a 40-year property owner at 68 East State Street at the corner of East State, beautiful Victorian, four-year art building. And it's a lot of pedestrian traffic, a lot of school visits. We certainly appreciate the city's investment in the infrastructure, the CSO and the water lines, and we support that entirely. I've got great reservations about the option number two, the expense of the destruction it's going to cause in the historic cityscape in that beautiful neighborhood. And just, it's unavoidable in some sense. I think we could keep pedestrian safety, bicycle safety up and down the hill without making, filling the gap between Hubbard and 77. The retaining walls there would probably be a civil engineered nightmare and the clay soil, slippery soil that would come to failure. As Tim Lee had pointed out in previous council meetings when he lived at 100 East State, the whole project with the complete streets version of it is rife with problems. And so I think it's a good opportunity for this newly invented city council to exhibit some fiscal constraint and say that we do not need this gold-plated option. Let's just stick to the fundamentals and fix the water, fix the CSO, and keep the neighborhood intact. Thank you.
So your recommendation is to do nothing but replace, fix and replace what's already there?
Yes, although I'm being persuaded by the notion of a complete sidewalk from College Street on the north side of the street. I think moving the park over to that side of the street would be a real pedestrian disaster for people exiting their cars, getting their homes on the south side of the street. That may have value to, to the sidewalk, College to Main Street on the north side.
Okay, thanks, Chris. I'm not seeing any other hands raised online, but this would be a time and I'm, oh, Donna.
May I make one more comment?
Well, John, John, I'd like you to hold off recognizing Donna B.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I missed the roundabout before. I was actually on the committee, the Mumpire Infrastructure Committee at the time, when it was a very robust committee of eight, 10 members active, who worked on this plan with Corey and Kurt and others. And we really felt it was very, very important to align ourselves in this street opportunity of improvement with complete streets. And it means more bicycle safe space, more pedestrian safe space. So I understand that it's too expensive to do the north upper side, but I do feel like the first thing would be to keep the bike lane. The second thing to keep would be the south side extension between Hubbard Park and up to the crosswalk, that side of the sidewalk. Retaining wall's expensive, so I understand we can't do the north side. It's just so important to have more resources for biking in order to have bikers do it. And likewise for pedestrians. And maybe we have to be more conscientious on getting more sand on those sidewalks. Maybe we can have a neighborhood effort to help supplement the city. But it's really important to take this opportunity to put in a place that slows traffic down, that makes it safer for everyone, we narrow the space, we share the space, more space for bicycles and safer for pedestrians. So I really support this recommendation, option two. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. John.
So the, you asked for people's recommendations and I'll, I think I'm, I think Ms. Wilcheck made a very good recommendation and that is, why not just move all the sidewalk to the, to the, I guess it's the north side of, of the street? And that would, you wouldn't have to have people cross anymore. And, and the caveat that I would make is that please don't think you're gonna, please don't move the sidewalk closer to our buildings. But if, I think you're only building one sidewalk on one side, you don't need to do that. So I'll, I'll stop there.
Thanks, John.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Ben.
Is that, is that actually, that if we built sidewalk continuously from the, on the north side, that we wouldn't have to widen the road as much? Or that would, if we eliminated the bike path portion of it? I guess I'm just trying to think, like, how could you continue that without, what's the minimum amount you could widen the road and have a continuous sidewalk?
I guess without the bike lane.
The widening of the road is associated with the bike lane, not the sidewalks. So no bike lane, no widening of the road.
So you would have retaining wall at the north, north side above the crosswalk. You wouldn't need much like this because you would eliminate the sidewalk on the south side and move the road over and put the sidewalk on the north side.
There could be some potential shifting there, yeah.
But without, without the major cut into that hillside? And maybe the power poles wouldn't have to move?
Well, that's not a big deal for us.
No, but I'm just...
Before we get back to council, Steve Whitaker always had his hand up and I wanted to recognize him.
Yeah, I'm going to be brief. A couple of things, you heard, Steve Whitaker, you heard about relocating poles to the inside line of the curb. I'd ask you to look at the lamppost on, next to Unitarian Church and look at the pole up on Court Street that's got the consolidated fiber splice box in it. That has, that pole is right up against the sidewalk. Sidewalk has shifted out into Court, has shifted all the granite curbs as well. And then at Unitarian, in order to drive around that obstacle, which is at the curb, they drive onto the, they ruin the Unitarian Church lawn. Every year, Unitarian has to go and replace their lawn and their seed and their, you know, soil. So we, putting any, any poles other than off the sidewalk is problematic. So I'm not encouraging you to do that by design. And as far as the condition of the maintenance, poor maintenance practices should not be defining our engineering for a new street that we're spending millions of dollars on. You know, it's, that's a different problem that needs to be addressed in a different way.
Thanks, Steve. Adrian.
Yeah, so thank you for this presentation. My background, I've worked in the Safe Routes to Schools for many years in Georgia at the Department of Transportation and was part of CDC's, I forgot what they called it, but Complete Streets at the federal government, really trying to design neighborhoods so that, my focus was so that kids can walk and bike to school safely. So this is very near and dear to my heart in terms of this design. And so when I look at this and I think of our community and our little kids walking to school, I really hate that they have to cross the sidewalk right in the middle. And I watch it all the time. And hearing from our community members and emails today about that south side part of the sidewalk on the, you know, upper part of the hill, have it being icy, that's a bummer. Like, we really want to encourage our community members to walk. I mean, that is really, really important. And so looking at these designs, I know you did not propose a fourth option, but I would like to really think about having one sidewalk, I don't know if we need two, on each side of the street. And then, you know, on the south side, when you have those utility poles, I would drive around Georgia, take pictures of utility poles in the middle of sidewalks. It's a very bad design, especially when you have wheelchairs and people with disabilities. It's, it's something that we try very, very hard to avoid, that design with a sidewalk. And so if you did not have a sidewalk on that south side, you would have your utility poles not in the middle of the sidewalk. And so is there an option of having the sidewalk on the north side continuous the whole way with a retaining wall by the primer piper property? I don't know what else it's called. I mean, I just would love for the kids to be able to walk down a sidewalk without ice, without falling, without, you know, any safety concerns, without having to cross in the middle of a very busy street. And, you know, not having that sidewalk in front of people's houses, I think, might open up some space for future design consideration. And so I don't know if that was ever talked about, but I think just based on the feedback today and just the knowledge that I have of that area with all the school age children and learning about the icy conditions on that part of the sidewalk and it being so close to those folks' homes and just the design of having those utility poles in the middle of the sidewalk, I'm not super psyched about because...
So Adrian, to clarify, are you suggesting that we should essentially eliminate the existing sidewalks that are on the south side of the street?
I would like to consider that. I would like to consider the elimination of the sidewalk on the south side, have the bike lane, and you have a full sidewalk from Main Street to College continuous. And it's safe, the kids don't have to cross back and forth. We know that it's in the sunny side so that the snow will melt in the winter and, you know, it'll be better utilized because people won't be afraid of falling. It doesn't cross as many driveways. We don't impact as many homes. I feel like there's just like a whole checklist of things that like, in my mind, I'm checking off like, yeah, this works, this works, this works, rather than impeding upon people's homes on the south side as you go up the hill. I mean, it's already on people's doorsteps. And if there wasn't even a sidewalk there, it just might make life a little easier for everybody.
Got it. I understand what you're saying. They're not here to talk about it, but I suspect that the people who own houses there that now have a sidewalk in front of their house would consider it a real downgrade to lose the sidewalk. But Jim.
I was, I was going to say, yeah, we would probably have to have another meeting like this so we would allow them to have a chance to speak, for sure. I want to kind of ask Kurt, what is the issue on that south side that it can't be done, you know, properly? Tough question, I know, but...
Well, I suspect that, that it does get shaded like some of the spokes said and, you know, salt has a certain temperature threshold at which it activates. So if it's in the shade and it's not getting sun and it's too cold, the salt doesn't work.
So I guess I'd have a question. How does Norfield Street work, which is in a pit? And on the south side, there is no sun in that pit. There's a section on Norfield Street, if you drive, a car drives up and at you, you have nowhere to go. They're going to pin you against the stone wall that's tired, ironed. You know where I mean, I'm sure, at the corner. And I'm kind of thinking big picture here. We have so many hills that have this same problem where it doesn't, it ices up. We walk on the road in the national ice, because I have a corner home and it comes around, two sides of mine are sidewalk, it's a right angle. He can't, he does the best he can, but he can't really plow that all that good. Nobody walks on that sidewalk when it's icy. They're all out in the road and we have the national ice traffic going by. And we have a lot of these areas in the city that has this problem. This is Vermont. It ices, if one hill ices up, it ices up on every hill. I don't know why people think that, you know, it only ices up on one or two. And we have a lot of neighborhoods that don't even have sidewalks. And I'm going to talk about like Freedom Drive. And I'm gonna talk about like Freedom Drive, where they zip around that circle there and... I mean, this is, you know, there's a lot of problems in this city with this. I'm just trying to point out, we could put a lot of money into everything to fix this up and a lot of areas are iced. I can tell you a sidewalk up our way you can't even walk on because it's all humped up and if a seven-year-old tried to walk on it, you're afraid of falling, cracking your head on the thing. So, just wanna try to look big picture that this is one small little section of town that has problems. We got lots of problems. I drive all around, we got lots of problems.
Well, sure, but, but the difference is, this is a spot where we're doing a major investment
I know, I understand.
To reconstruct the whole road, so that's why we're talking about it now.
I understand that.
Folks, any other thoughts? Our, this proposal we have from the city is to approve option two. Does anyone have, have any other thoughts? We've been going at it for a little over an hour. Adrian?
Could we, I would like to consider an option four and then bring back the community. I would like to hear from the community because it impacts their property, it impacts, you know, I, I just would like to hear a little bit more public input from this project today. I know this has been in the works for a really long time, but we're at final design, we're trying to approve a final design, just wanna make sure we get it right. Or conceptual design to a final, preliminary design, right? Isn't that what we're doing?
We're in, this is essentially the preliminary design and so the next step will be final once, once the streets get selected.
And i- is that a feasible suggestion?
Um, we can, I guess, we, as staff, would like just some clarity of, um, are we, we proposing, bringing back a, a different option then? If that's what, if council wants to continue the sidewalk on, uh, on the north side and eliminate the south side sidewalk from Hubbard to College, you know, I think that's something we can do, if that's the preferred alternative from council. I, I recognize that, um, that the folks that have sidewalk there now probably would like a chance to speak about it, so that's partially why we didn't propose that. So, yeah, I mean, we can, we can proceed however the council would like. But I just, just wanna make sure that, um, when we come back, that we provide what the council's looking for.
Didn't you want the whole sidewalk all the way down to Main Street, huh?
So I was thinking about another design of, and I think we have to talk about, I mean, I would love to hear from homeowners, do they want the sidewalk eliminated from their house on the south side, right? So if there was one sidewalk, like if you need a sidewalk on both sides, one that, you know, it's expensive, right? So now we know the cost, we know the design, and so I think you need to make decisions based on the information received today. And so, is there an option to have a sidewalk from Main Street up to College, continuous on the north side? So as, you know, a third grader coming down from, you know, College Street, they're just walking down that sidewalk and they're making a right on to Hubbard Street. They're not having to cross, they're not having to like, you know, zigzag down East State Street. It's just one continuous sidewalk all the way to downtown. And it's on the north side, the sun hits it, there doesn't, not any issues with icing or whatever, but they will have a big impact on the south side homes by not having a sidewalk in front of their house. There would be a bike lane and probably like a buffer lane, right? So whatever that would look like, but the sidewalk would be gone because it wouldn't be on both sides.
I was confused though, are you talking about getting rid of the sidewalk from Hubbard down to town?
No, it would be, the sidewalk would be the whole side of the road.
No, no, I mean on the south side.
Yeah.
Talking about getting rid of that sidewalk too. So no sidewalk anywhere on the south. I'm just trying to get clear what you're saying.
I mean, I think that south side sidewalk with utility poles in the middle of the sidewalk.
Okay, yeah, thank, that's all, yeah, that, you gave me my answer, thank you.
Councilman Sal?
Well, I think if we're gonna explore that, we ought to do it with and without the bike lane. Because the bike lane is the widening factor and it, if we don't have, if we don't know what that number is and it's probably close to what we talked about, but if we have that as an, as an option, you wanna, you wanna bring everything we need to make a decision, I think we'd need that. I, it also looks like we have at least one person who thinks the survey needs to be reviewed and we probably oughta know what, what that situation is before we, before we, you know, spend time on a final design. I mean, I, I'm, I get, this is the first I've learned of the possible issue with the survey.
You know, the idea, go ahead.
Real quick, uh, I'll, I'll reference the Vermont Community's Guide to Complete Streets, specifically the right-of-way section. And it says, when, going through this, usually the most challenging part is convincing property owners, uh, to let go of something that they have always assumed that was theirs and that they've taken care of as if it were theirs. That is the most difficult part when upgrading streetscapes. So regardless of how we move forward, I foresee a lot of effort going forward, sharing the lines and where they are and also designing elements that would limit the impact.
Yeah, I, I just, I see we have a couple of comments, people who've spoken before, but I'm gonna take them again, but, but the idea of removing all that sidewalk on the, on the south side seems like a, a really significant downgrade of that, uh, street. And really, for the, for the people who live there, I, I just think that is gonna turn out, I think it's a bad idea and I think the people are gonna, gonna hate it, but, uh, we'll see what... I, I don't know if there's support on the council beyond one person to request that and I'm certainly not gonna ask you to do it if only one person wants it. Jocelyn and then Eve?
Yes, I, I know it's late, um, I appreciate all the thinking through. I, in listening to everyone, I have two suggestions. I think it will be hard for people to lose a sidewalk because how are they supposed to walk to and from? So, I was thinking it would be nice to have an estimate from the staff of, if you eliminated the portion of the brand-new sidewalk on the south side that's black hatched. I know it's not ideal for people to cross the street, but we can't have a perfect solution here. Our city also doesn't have the capacity to maintain more sidewalks, but, but we need more sidewalks, so this would be a balance. You keep the sidewalk where the houses are, because I don't know how those people are gonna walk up and down the street safely, but you remove, there will be a gap on the south side where that black crosshatches, and then I can't believe I'm saying this, because I bike up and down East State Street all the time, I bike all over Montpelier. I would, I would really consider getting rid of the bike lane, even though it makes me cringe and throw up a little bit, but we also don't want the city in litigation over the survey and encroachment on parcels. And if it's the bike lane that's causing that issue and we're gonna need sidewalks on both sides of the street where we have existing homes, um, while I don't love it, I could live with biking up and down East State Street. I've, I've never been afraid on that street. So those are my closing comments and, uh, thank you for thinking through this.
Thanks, Jocelyn. Eve?
Actually, I think I should do the same thing, but I do love the bike lane towards the north side, and I don't think you should nip out any tricky sidewalks and you could add that one on the road.
Okay, thanks. Uh, John?
Just...
Go ahead, Scott.
Part of the reason that, you know, we included the bike lane as part of the recommendation was, if you're gonna do it, the, the bike lane, now's the time.
Yep.
Right? You can come back and build sidewalk and retaining walls off the side of the road, but are you gonna come back and widen a road that you've just reconstructed? Right? Probably not.
Yeah.
So that was, that was one of the reasons why the bike lane, you know, is in that recommendation.
Thanks. John, do you have something?
Yeah, I, I'll just say that the, um, you could have a variety, you could cost out a variety of options here. And one would be to simply eliminate the sidewalk on the south side. That's about the same length as adding the sidewalk on the north side above, above, uh, the, the crossing. And, and you could still keep the sidewalk on the south side and probably wind up with something around the same cost, but you would have accomplished the one continuous sidewalk, um, from downtown to college without having kids cross. And as to if people on the other side of East State are upset about losing their sidewalk, that's, you can, you, you could keep it, um, at the same, you know, I'm not saying you eliminate that, but please, so it would appear to me that you could have, uh, one continuous sidewalk at about the same cost by putting a, a sidewalk, extending the sidewalk on the north side.
Thanks, John.
All the way to college.
Thanks, John. Folks, do we have, uh, Chris?
One, one for detail that I...
Chris, why don't you come up to the table and introduce yourself?
Chris Lumbras, Sustainability Facilities Coordinator. So the, the question I have with the continuous sidewalk on the north side of the street is between West and College Street, a couple of those houses on the north side of the street are right on the street there, their parking almost extends into the curb as it is, so that I think that would be a little tricky.
Yeah, my office is right around the corner from there, so I know exactly what you're talking about. Council members, well, let me ask you one other thing. I, I hate to get off this topic without making a decision and we're over an hour, but what is the necessary timeline for you guys?
Well, that's the next slide in the presentation.
Perfect.
So, uh, just phase one, currently under construction. We're hoping to complete that by July 1st of the summer. Phase two, um, would like to, um, you know, be designing that as soon as we possibly can. Bid it this winter and then go to construction first thing next spring. So, I mean, we can, it can be pushed another meeting, it's not gonna completely derail the project if that's what we need to do to get more input. We are anxious to get this under design so that we do hit a, a winter bid date. If we miss the winter bid date, costs are gonna go up.
Yep.
Then we may have to de-sculp the project.
Folks?
I mean, I can, I'll just give my point of view. You know, I think this is a really tough one because you can't have everything in the world and I, I, I think in terms of importance, to me, I, I really feel like pedestrian safety is number one. I also, I really, um, I'm really concerned about those homeowners and just expanding, you know, expanding the road so widely that we just have more asphalt, even if it is for bikes. And, um, you know, and then, and then frankly, the cost too. But, you know, I think, uh, what I would, I, I guess what I would really like to see is a, uh, some kind of design that has a continuous sidewalk but potentially eliminates the bike path. I mean, if, if something had to go, for me, it's the bike path.
I'm seeing other people nodding. Uh, Palin, I can't see you down at the end. Is, are you feeling the same way?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have anything yet.
You don't have to, you don't have to say anything about it. Well, it sounds like that's where we are, if, there's support for that, so... I, I do think option two actually is a compromise, but why don't, what, what's the timeline for coming back with, with that option? Two meetings?
Yeah, probably two meetings, I think I'm gonna be out of town for the next meeting.
All right. Do you need a, we need a motion for that or you just wanna take the sense of the council? Okay.
Do you want us to propose, um, no, uh, providing a cost option with no bike lane and a continuous sidewalk on the north side?
This is your thing, Ben?
Yeah, that is it.
Yeah.
And that sidewalk on the north side, right, that would leave no sidewalk on the south side at all from Main Street all the way up to College or from, just remove it from Hubbard up to College?
I, I wouldn't, I'm, my motion, I wouldn't remove it at all.
No, I don't hear...
So leave the south side the way it is.
But what would be removing, if, in my, I mean, I'm open to other ideas, but what I was thinking is if we could remove the bike lanes, can you have a continuous sidewalk on the north side, on both sides?
Gotcha.
Right? Or on the north side at least, um, that doesn't widen the road that much. And I just, I, the other thing I just meant to say is like, I really appreciate like the Complete Streets Committee and philosophy and all the work that has gone into this. And I hate saying like, oh, let's just get rid of the bike path. I hate that. But like, I just feel like there has to be a compromise here somewhere and that's, for me, where it is.
Andy Bauton, uh, I think we've got, I think where we are, if you have one minute, I'll give you a last word.
I just don't wanna lose sight of Chris Lumbras' comment. A continuous path all the way up the north side is going to incur costs on that, a, a very large retaining wall between West and, uh, and, and basically to the College Green and also really encroach on, on houses up there. So I think that the consideration in costing to come up to basically West Street and then cross where it is level and maybe sa- safer for, for pedestrians should be, should be considered i- in light of those houses right on the street and where their parking is. And I know their parking was part of the permitting process for the units of apartments that are in, uh, those buildings and, and they were allowed those parking spaces, uh, which would be taken out by any kind of sidewalk. Uh, and I'm talking 106 through the, to the, to the end of, up to College Street.
Thank you. Okay, I think you have your guidance from the council. It is time to move on to our next topic. Thanks, everybody. This is not, I, I knew this wasn't gonna be an easy one.
Thank you.
All right, that was, that was budgeted for 30 minutes and went on for an hour and 18 minutes, so Carrie, you were right. All right. Next, we're moving up to items 13, 14, and 15, and I think we can take them as a, as a parcel. And I, I wanna start out the conversation by saying that this is not on the agenda to invite substantive comments on the city plan. The purpose of having this on tonight's agenda is to talk about, to give us a little bit of an overview and to talk about the process. And so, that's, that's what we're looking at tonight. And I'll recognize Mike Miller. With that in mind, I, but people, we will have at least two public hearings once the city plan is proposed, once the city plan is before us and we will, um... Anyone who wants to have anything to say about the city plan will have ample opportunity to say it. Tonight is not likely the night for that.
Yeah, sorry, I thought of the PowerPoint on and it's not here anymore. So, we will go with, um, just, this is just meant to be a quick overview. I wanted to give the council, before we get into the public hearings and everything, kind of a little bit of background and an understanding of, um, how we got, oh, Mike Miller, planning director.
Thank you.
The, to where we are with the City Plan 2025. As you know, uh, the Planning Commission has been working on this. They had their public hearing and they voted to send this to you for your consideration. So it is currently online. We'll have a couple of quick things we'll go through. The, um, as Jack mentioned, it's not intended to be a public input session. We really wanted to talk about why did we decide to do a web-based plan? And to give a little bit of background... And to give a little bit of background on the implementation plans. So why a web-based plan? So this started back in 2017, so we were working on this at the same time as we were trying to finish getting the city plan adopted. And so the Planning Commission, once it had moved to City Council, Planning Commission sat down and said, okay, how do we want to move forward with the new city plan? And being a little bit of a planning nerd, I read my planning magazine that comes out every month or every quarter. And they had discussions on some of the award-winning plans for that year, and Plano, Texas won that year. And they're mostly, it was, it was an online plan, and it was really focused on doing videos. So a lot of their plan focused on videos. They were getting a lot of, a lot more interaction with the, with the public and the community. A lot more people were viewing it because it was an easier media for people to absorb. And so we did not go all that way into, into videos with our proposal, but it did get us thinking, if we moved away from paper and PDF plans and we went with a web-based plan, you know, what would we do and what would be our considerations? We could do a web, we could do just a website, and we looked at some other plans that had been done in that way. We also could do what are called ArcGIS storyboards. And I'll get a little bit into that later, and that's what we eventually ended up moving towards. But there are other products that we could have used to kind of get away from a standard PDF plan. And so taking a little bit of a step back, you know, the purpose of our plans, of plans in general, really, they kind of serve two primary purposes. One is it's a guiding document, it's a vision, and the other is that it's a communication tool for that vision. So it doesn't do us any good to develop a plan, develop a vision, if nobody's actually looking at it and relating to it. As I said, it's difficult to be a guiding document if no one is seeing it. And, you know, this is where the digital plans are better than the papers and PDF plans that we have. People just don't download them, they don't read them, they don't absorb them. And so could we use new media to help to kind of change how we relate to the public? And so we chose the Esri ArcGIS storyboards. And the reason for that is we already own it, so there's no additional costs. So that was a big factor. So we don't have to worry about it. Kurt and Zach and those guys, they have it down at the garage, they use it all the time, it's what our utilities are all recorded in. It's a universally used software, it's an industry standard, so while there may be a lot of, you know, from 2017 to now, you could go and look at what products are out there to do some nice fancy designs, there may be a lot out there, but will they still be around in five years? ArcGIS, Esri, it's still going to be around. It's a, it's a bedrock of an entire industry. So we were comfortable going in that direction, and Esri continues to innovate. So new products come out and they come online. And so some of the advantages for future plans for us, and these aren't all in here, but this is why we made the step to web-based plans, is we could do videos. We could take the existing plan we have put together and put some videos. The reason we didn't do some of those is we really need to make sure the plan is ready. So you don't want to do, spend a lot of money putting together videos and then have the council or the public go through and say, well, that's not really our vision, we really want to change it, because then you've got to spend the money to change a video. It would be better for us to go through and adopt the plan and then know that we could in the next year, two years, go through and add videos to go and take what is the approved plan and add that extra level of of communication, that extra media. We also could adjust how these work into slideshows. We also could do dashboards and live updates, and I'll get back to that with a little asterisk, but, you know, maybe in the future, I think five or 10 years, you know, I'm talking about AI questions and answers for the future. I mean, somebody could come in and start asking questions if it's in a web-based format. You just can't do that in the PDF. So taking this step, and more and more communities across the country are making that step of taking their plans and making them be web-based. There are a lot of different formats people use. Not everybody uses Esri storyboards, but there are a lot more web-based products and different plans that are going up. So the legal disclaimer on dashboards and live updates is we're kind of at the cutting edge of things. Law hasn't entirely caught up with us, and there's going to be some questions, and we were very conservative with this update because we know there are efforts to scuttle the projects that are associated with this, so we really couldn't take any risks. But risks in the future are really up to the council's willingness to see how far that gray area goes. So one is, we went with our, our attorneys to kind of go through and say, everything has to be fixed and locked down, there's nothing dynamic about the city plan. I could make a pretty good argument that we'd go through and say that if you adopt a plan that is tied to a metric that updates, that that should be okay. That's never been decided by law. It doesn't say you can under law, and it doesn't say you can't under law. The plan just has to be adopted. So could we have dynamic components that are linked to a dashboard, for example, that will track the number of permits that are going out? So we have a continuous process built into our city plan to track different dashboards or live updates. It's a gray area. None of that are in this plan because we went with the most vanilla version of a web-based plan. It is, all the components, all the layers are all locked in, and so when this is adopted, it it won't be dynamic in any way. But why we're here, why I'm presenting this, is just to go through and say, the reason the Planning Commission decided, hey, let's do a web-based plan, is because there's a lot more options for us going forward. So that was a big component I just wanted to talk about before, because it's really not something you can get into, when we get into the public hearing process, we're going to be tied down into what are the policy comments, what are these other comments? So really quickly, the last thing I wanted to touch on that is a little bit innovative about what you're going to be getting starting next month are the implementation plans. They are, they were completely redone with visions, goals, and strategies. This includes things that we do plus new ideas. So you'll see things in there that talk about continuing to do things and doing new things, and we wanted to make sure we were capturing the full breadth of what the city does because it was, we felt it was important that we not only talk about what new things we want to do, but so people can have an understanding of, oh, these are all the things that we do for housing or energy. This was initially intended to be an Excel searchable database, so it was going to be really a very neat system to be able to, be able to query where things are, but that got a little, we got a little out over our skis on that one, and we rolled it back. And instead, Evelyn made some beautiful storyboards, and that's where that went. But there are options going forward in the future for that as well, if we wanted to reopen those opportunities. And the last slide is just, the implementation plans, there are 12 chapters, 20 separate plans, 30 pages. They're meant to be strategic, so this gets a little bit into, we don't have anything in there encouraging or supporting things, it's all about actionable items. The steps are to, the actionable steps have to be either plans, permits, programs, projects, or policies. They're city government-focused, so what we mean by that is we're not, there isn't anything in the plan that says residents should do this, or businesses should do that. It is just focusing on what government wants. So if we want residents to do something, residents should be recycling. Well, we should have a program that educates the public on the values of doing that. So that's, as you look through it, as you consider it, as you hear comments, just wanted to have you have that background. There are also your benchmarks. I know there are folks that are big benchmark fans. I like, I, benchmarks I see to be something that we put in after we decide on our goals. To kind of have, spend the time debating what the benchmark should be before we decide on the goals is, I, the, and Planning Commission agreed, was a problem. We will find occasional benchmarks in there. I think that's something that we'll come at a later time. So that was it for the introduction. I didn't want to spend a lot of time, but I did want to give you that brief introduction before we get into the other two items. I'll take any comments or questions.
Any questions on the introduction, council members?
Thanks, Mike. I enjoyed actually the web interface. I liked it. Yeah, thanks.
All right, now, move to the substantive things we're talking about tonight.
All right, so, to make sure I've got the first one first, we'll have got the, set the.
Corrections.
Approved corrections and set the hearing dates. So, as I mentioned in the cover sheet, we, the Planning Commission went through, had their hearings, had their meetings, and approved the changes and submitted them to you. And afterwards, staff went through and did a side-by-side with the archive version. So let me take a step back, just go through and say, the official version of our city plan is the web. You can't have two, both can't be official version. We are saying the official version is the web version, but we know people still want hard copies, so we have a PDF hard copy that is in the archive section of the website, or we can print one out, you can take them out. So there is a, an archive version. After we approved the plan, we went back, we looked, and we did a side-by-side because before we didn't have the opportunity, we had all the changes, we did a side-by-side. You have a memo that has a list of the changes that are missing from the archive, or we're wrong in the archive. Most of them are title errors, and there are a few other things. So there are two things we've wanted. One was to update the video. We have an updated video, we will put that on. You guys say, yes, we can do that. Number two, we're going to update the archive version to match the website version. And if you approve that, then we will have all of those available for you. And then we can, we can break this into two motions if you want. One, to approve those quick amendments, and then the second one, we want to set the first two public hearing dates from May 14th to May 28th.
So that would explain why, when I tried to look at the video, it said, this video is private.
Did it?
Yeah. Because it hasn't been, it hasn't been changed yet.
I was supposed to replace the video in the, the website.
Okay, well.
Oh, okay. We made the video and to put it on the side, and then at tomorrow, we would go through and.
Got it.
Add it. Yes.
So is there a motion to adopt these corrections?
I move that we adapt the corrections.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, is there a motion to set the first two public hearings for May 14th and 28th?
Can I just ask a question about that?
Yeah.
So.
Well, Palin, you're, you're making the motion first.
Yeah, I just want to ask, we receive housing committee recommendations or suggestions, and as far as I know, that they are not included in the plan. So should we have the public hearings, like discussing to add some of the suggestions to the plan, or we should just go to public hearings, then discuss about adding some of the suggestions?
All, all of that can be dealt with in the public hearing. And now, Ben?
I'm sorry, my question's really basic. Is the public hearing the same as our regular council meeting that takes place there, or is it a something totally separate?
These are, these are dates of regular council meetings.
Yes, okay.
I guess I would just add, for clarification, there, under state law, you're required to have two public hearings. You can have as many as you want. We're just setting the dates for the first two. You're welcome to continue them into the future after that date. You would just continue the hearing. At the end of the hearing, on the 28th, if you said, we want another hearing, you just continue the hearing to the June something meeting.
All right, is there a motion to set those public hearings? Please, somebody?
For May 14th.
And eight, and 28th. Is there a second?
Can I ask a question?
Well, let's get a second. Thank you. Okay, Jim?
I was just wondering if we wanted to have a meeting in between because we, you know, we get such jammed meetings that maybe if there, if there's a lot, if there's a number of people that come to both of these in a row, we're going to have a lot of other stuff with it, where maybe we could have a meeting in between and kind of jam some stuff into that one, give people more of a chance to speak a little longer, maybe, not have to hurry them.
Sal?
So if we have the, if we have the hearings before we discuss, for that's the kind of thing that Helen was talking about, adding recommendations, what, what happens? Do we have to, do we have to extend those hearings until those recommendations are added, or?
I'm not sure I understand your questions. At, at any of these public, any public hearing, we can make changes. So.
So I can probably answer the question. Where Sal's going with it? So if there's any substantive amendments that are made at a meeting, there would have to be another meeting after that one. So if, if you were to go to the 28th and vote substantive changes, then we would have to extend and have another hearing after that because there would be a requirement to send that document to the Planning Commission for comments. They would come back at the next meeting and say, we're perfectly fine with the changes that you recommended, or we have concerns because of X, Y, Z, and then you can approve it at the next meeting. But you can make non-substantive changes. So if somebody came in and said, oh, you had a typo on page 49, you could make the change on 49 and approve as amended, it's not a substantive change, but if you make any big changes. But, and we'll get into the comments, there are a number of those housing comments that were incorporated, and we can have a broader discussion of that, about that at the hearing. I can include that in my presentation, if you'd like, as to what was done and why.
But so Jim, your question really is something that I'm kind of thinking that I suspect will be better served if at least one of these public hearings is the only thing we do on a given night.
Well, I just think if, if we have jammed in agendas, we can kind of push some to that meet, middle meeting so that maybe we can have a little more comment time for people who are not jamming them in so much on this plan. I mean, maybe nobody will come, who knows? I mean, that's hard to predict, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's not going to happen, Jim.
I have to say, like, I really like the idea of like, I don't know if it's a special meeting or what, but a meeting that's just dedicated to discussing the plan.
Is everyone, is everyone available on the 21st, the Wednesday in between those two?
Yeah, that could work, to answer my question.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm available on my person. And just for, for what it's worth, I was going to say this for my update, but I have a, a work meeting that's been scheduled for over a year on the, into, at our next meeting that, I'm going to try to zoom in, but I won't be here for the whole.
Okay.
Can I ask, has it known the length of the meeting? So like, we will start since 30, and if we go like up to 10, or if it would be 8?
We don't know the length. It can be, it can be a while, as, as you, this is, in, in my experience of working on zoning ordinance and, and master plan proposals, there may be substantive comments that take a while to get through. So I, if we're setting a set, special meeting, I don't, I can't promise that it'll be assured of than a usual council meeting.
You have to plan, you need to plan like your normal, normal meeting.
That's, that's what I would do, yeah. So thinking of what we're, where we are, would someone want to move to amend the motion before us to say, his special, or public hearings on the 28th? his special, or, public hearings on the 21st and the 28th instead of the 14th and the 28th? Go ahead.
I, I would, I, I like that. I don't know what other people feel, but I guess I would make that motion for the purposes of discussion, that the, the public hearings of the city plan be on the 21st and the 28th?
Is there a second?
One of them just dedicated to the plan.
Yeah, exactly. The 21st would be just the plan.
Yeah.
This is a motion to amend?
This is a motion to amend the Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now you've amended the motion to say we're having public hearings on the 21st and the 28th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay, Mike, that gets us to item 15.
This one can be a little bit confusing. So this is a request for regional approval for the draft Montpelier City Plan 2025. And it's, kind of talked about a little bit in the, in the covered letter. Staff is recommending regional approval before adoption, because there are many small technical requirements embedded in the, in the approval process. If one of those becomes a stumbling block to approval, council will have the opportunity to amend the plan. That doesn't stop you in any way from amending the plan on your end. You guys can continue to amend the plan, and those amendments would be forwarded on to the regional planning commission. And at one point or the other, one is going to end up being conditionally approved until we get through the process. But the idea is, if we have parallel tracks going, the regional planning commission can start their review, and they have a committee that would review the plan, and eventually would go to the full board for approval. And if it got to the full board and you were not done approving it yet, they would issue a conditional approval. That is, approved unconditionally, that these, these aren't changed, or that those, any final changes are sent back to them before they can get their final approval. But the idea of that is, once they've made their review and checked the boxes, you can be assured that it's not, that the question of is this a legal document has been, that hurdle has been crossed, and you can take that concern off the list. And, and, again, if you guys had a, if you adopted, and then the regional plan says there needs to be a change, we have to go all the way back to the start. And the planning commission has to have a public hearing, 30 day notice, 30 more days before it gets you, two more public hearings from you. So if, if we, they need to be doing things parallel. So that way, you guys know when you adopt it, that it's going, going to be regionally approved, or is already conditionally regionally approved, and vice versa.
So the motion that you're looking for is to
Request regional approval of the draft Montpelier City Plan 2025.
With the corrections we've made tonight?
Um, yes, that would be.
Okay, is there a motion? Does everybody understand what we're doing? Okay. Okay, does somebody want to move that? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion of this? Well, I'm
I have something I'd like to say about it, or should we hear from Steve?
Well, go ahead.
No, I just, I, I mean, I think the way you described it, Mike, I think I'm comfortable with. But I just want to really, there, there is something about the process of requesting approval for a plan that we haven't approved yet, and that we have just scheduled the public hearings on. And I want to make sure that we are just all really clear, that we are taking input authentically, and we might make substantive changes, right? And so I think it actually does make sense to, to, to move it along in the sense of like, if there are technical things that need to get approved that can accelerate, great. But I just want to really level set the expectation for ourselves and for the public that we should be taking authentic input, potentially making changes, and, and not hesitate in doing so, because we've already sent it off to the regional planning commission.
Yeah, and if, if I could just add to that, so in your packet, what was the required report? Which actually is required. But what the required report does is it goes through all the statutory requirements. So staff has done a review. And, and most of what is required in a regional approval is going through a set of checklists of, the example I, I used of the plan, which is, you have to talk about solid waste. Your plan and, the city plan could be, we're going to take it, put it in a rocket, shoot it to the moon. Check. Doesn't have to be good, it just, you have to talk about certain things. In the transportation plan, you've got to talk about the railroad. The energy plan, you have to talk about these things. And most of these are, you know, there's conformity things with the goals. And you'll, you'll see if you are interested in going through the whole checklist, there's, we've, we've gone through and done an evaluation of the plan. Most of what you're going to be probably evaluating are going to be the substantive pieces of the plan. Now, you know, is this our housing? Is this, is this doing enough? Do we agree with that strategy? Most of them will not change whether or not there's a regional approval. And I'll be the first one to tell you, this may have an impact. You know, like, you know, that, if you make that change, it would be good to have the regional planning commission to check it, because that may have an impact. Unless somebody comes in and says, we should eliminate all conversations of public transportation, then I'll be like, well, that's going to be an issue, because that's a requirement.
That, that's very helpful, Mike. Steve.
First, I want to, Steve Whitaker again, first, I want to address the issue of the web-based plan.
Well, wait, Steve.
It's like tampering.
Steve, where we are now is on the specific question of, is the council going to submit this plan to the regional planning commission for approval? And that's the only thing I
I know, and this applies to that.
That's the only thing I
You're trying to interrupt me, but that's, that, this experiment with a web-based plan is like tampering with the Voting Rights Act. You're disenfranchising a whole lot of people who don't use the web, who can't watch, go through this plan on a smartphone, and who can't see the maps on the PDF version. So this plan was not designed for public participation. In fact, it was designed to shed public participation down to a narrow group. So that is a problem. The required report you're being asked to forward on has numerous mistruths in it. And I would ask you to, even if you have to go into executive session, discuss the totally blacked out report from your Miller's council in response to Tom Weiss's critique of this. And Tom Weiss pointed out, this plan doesn't meet statutory requirements in a number of places, and it wasn't even exhaustive. And it went to the lawyer, and Mike, I, Mike says, oh, we're okay. And the lawyer's document comes back, all blacked out. So obviously, there's something there to hide. And y'all need to be paying attention to it. You need to, you know, figure out, is Mike trying to pull a fast one? And this whole charade of parallel, you know, all of this is being, this is a result of the deadline for the growth center. We're gaming the system, because Mike likes to cut corners. And Mike told me after a meeting, oh, statutes and laws are just for, you know, those people in the State House. We figured, our job is to figure out how to work around them, you know? And that's just not the environment, the legal environment that we're working in. We have to live within our laws, and the laws are not going to allow us to, you know, I, unfortunately, I'm going to defend the laws before I defend this half-baked plan. And I think you knew that already. But my point is, y'all are being complicit in this by not doing your due diligence to review that memo. Find out how much truth the lawyer found in, in Thomas Weiss's analysis. Ask Thomas Weiss for a further analysis. You know, he's an engineer, he's, he's quite brilliant and honest. And, and that's not all that you see going on here. So I'm asking you to address the issue of the web-based plan. It, maybe we should go back to a paper plan. You know, we're, we're, and I'm not inclined, oh, you also have a conflict of interest here. Mike, on a consent agenda, a year or two ago, was appointed as our regional commissioner. So he votes, and sits on the regional planning committee, you know, of the regional planning commission. That's a blatant conflict of interest, because he's the paid staff trying to work around the laws up here on our behalf. So don't fall into this trap.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I will just respond and, and say that I utterly reject the allegations that our planning director is, is some kind of lawless person who's trying to skirt the rules. Are we ready to vote on the motion? Are we ready to vote on the motion?
I have a question.
Sure.
What if we delay this for, for next meeting, or?
Uh, it, it's not that critical time-wise. We're just trying to, knowing that a lot of the committees at the, the regional planning commission meet monthly, we're just trying to get the, the staff is going to have to do a staff review. That would then go to the committee, so just getting into their cycle. So that's most of the, most of the timing.
And do you have a response to Mr. Root's complaint? Not about your dishonesty, but about the legal requirements?
Um, this has been submitted to our attorney, and our attorney provided input back. And Steve wanted a copy of the correspondence between the attorney and staff, and that is privileged.
Yeah, no, I, I saw the blacked out copy. I'm just saying, you're, you don't have concern about the legal objections, right?
No, David, uh, David Root doesn't. And so I'm, you know, Dave is a very conservative, has very conservative opinions on things. So, yeah, it's, he didn't find any issue with that. And we were, in that, in that instance, very specifically looking at the questions of, that were raised by Mr. Weiss. So earlier, before we even started this, trust me, we would not have started this without first contacting David Root, go through and say, we'd like to do this. Do you have big concerns? And he laid out some, like, these would be the things we would be looking for. State law doesn't say you can. So, yes, but these were the, these would be the thresholds that we would be looking for as areas of concern, if you were starting to stray into areas where we would have a dashboard or these other areas. These could be areas of potential legal risk, because we don't know if it's legal to have, you know, to prove by city council. Can it be dynamic and change on its own? Oh, no. His recommendation was, I wouldn't do it on the first round. It's like, I would wait, and then once more community to these types of plans, it'll be more likely that state law would catch up and start to address what's allowed, not allowed in these types of plans. But to address the, the other point of needing a paper version, that's why we, we went above and beyond to make the archive version. That was a recommendation that David had, was that it's not required, but it would be strongly recommended that we have that archive version that would be the accurate representation. So that way, if somebody came into city hall and said, I would like a paper copy, there'd be paper copies available. Recognizing that it's not the official version, because the official version is online, but because they're identical, that, that would be sufficient.
I'll just also point out, as an attorney, that I regularly am withholding information from people and telling people something is privileged or confidential, not because I'm trying to hide anything, but because, as attorneys, we, it's very important for us to maintain the confidentiality of information that, that comes to us. Are we ready to vote?
I guess, and I guess the last, the last point is, the whole point of the request for regional approval is to, you know, if, if there are accusations of, of stuff of, that we're trying to beat the system somehow, this is, this is going to another, this is going to the regional planning commission, and they're going to review it. I sit on the regional plan, I'm on the board, but I'm on the regional plan. I'm not on the plan review committee. It's a separate committee that will be reviewing this. I'm not on the committee that will be reviewing our city plan. Until it comes to city, until it comes to the full board. At the full board, there is a policy about whether or not I have the right to vote. I don't know, I, I don't know the policy on that. Generally, I would think it probably says, I'm not allowed to vote on that. But there is a, a very specific policy at the regional planning commission for voting on municipal plans. Municipal approval.
Thanks, Mike. Are we ready to vote on the motion to submit this to the regional planning commission? If so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, thanks, Mike, this has been very helpful. Yeah. All right. Since we expect we'll probably be going into executive session to discuss the acting city manager contract, is that what you're expecting?
I was anticipating we were going to executive session.
Okay, we're up for acting city manager contract.
So in your packets, you have a, a draft agreement that I've reviewed with Jack, and it kind of outlines sort of terms that, you know, would be in place for me to step in as acting city manager on July 1st. And sort of some of the key terms are, you know, really sort of the duties as assigned within the charter, but then also some specifics around projects that we've discussed. And then also some of the safeties for me, just making sure that I can go back to my assistant's job if, you know, I'm not made permanent. So those are the, the basic nuts and bolts of it. It also does discuss compensation. And so just for an outline, and for the public generally, in FY '26, the assistant city manager is slated to make 116, 854. And the manager is slated to make 165, 464. And so what I proposed is 140, which is sort of in the middle, and is in alignment with, you know, current managers also taking into account what department heads make within the city, and sort of the additional duties that are assigned in this role during this transition. And so I can get into specifics if you want. The other thing that's also in your pocket are two things that I think are pretty important. One is the transition plan, which just kind of outlines phase by phase, you know, how we're going to transition duties to me if we should approve the employment agreement. And then also just the ICMA code of ethics is also in your packet, which is just really important in terms of covering, you know, how I'll come to be. So that's where we're at. Any questions? Thoughts, comments?
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Just to clarify, that is a motion allowing for execution of that agreement.
Yeah.
Just making sure of it. Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, now we're up to other business. And I emailed you all the text of the resolution honoring Rick DeAngelis. I can read it out if you want to, but if you haven't had a chance to, to read it, there's an event coming up a week from Friday at BCFA honoring him. And I was asked to present this resolution to, so we would have it before the event. And I would love it if someone would move to approve this. And if you want me to read it, because you didn't get it in time to read it, that's fine.
Jack, would you mind reading it?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. "In recognition of Rick DeAngelis for outstanding contributions to addressing homelessness in Montpelier, whereas Rick DeAngelis demonstrated extraordinary dedication to the well-being of individuals and families experienced homelessness in Montpelier and the Central Vermont community, throughout his career, and most recently as executive and co-executive director of Good Samaritan Haven. And whereas through his many years of leadership, dedication, and consistent advocacy in affordable housing and homelessness services, he has significantly impacted the lives of some of the city's and region's most vulnerable residents. And whereas Rick DeAngelis has transformed Good Samaritan Haven from a single shelter to one of Vermont's leading shelter networks, expanding from one shelter with 15 beds to four shelters with 81 beds in Washington County. And whereas he rapidly responded with creativity and care to changing public health needs of the shelters, keeping shelter and motel guests safe during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas he established a street outreach program to ensure the health and safety of unsheltered community members. And whereas Rick DeAngelis continues to give his time and passion to improving access to shelter, housing, and food in Montpelier. And whereas he has worked collaboratively with city leaders, service providers, and the broader community to promote long-term, sustainable solutions to homelessness. And whereas Rick DeAngelis has exemplified the spirit of public service And whereas Rick DeAngelis has exemplified the spirit of public service, equity, and compassion, inspiring others to take action and reinforcing our community's commitment to dignity, access to housing for all. Now therefore be it resolved that the Montpelier City Council formally recognizes and honors Rick DeAngelis for his tireless contributions, leadership, and service to the community. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Rick DeAngelis with deep appreciation and gratitude on behalf of the city council and the residents of Montpelier."
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome. So, is there a motion to approve this? Or to adopt this?
We actually have to approve that? I mean, who can issue it on your own?
Well, it's, it's, it's written as a, a resolution of the, of the city council.
I move that we approve it.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. City council reports. Palin, we'll start at your end tonight.
So, I just wanna thank you all, the community members who dropped me and took in with me because of the national, um, let me say that, national level actions against this community in the United States. And I really appreciate being part of Montpelier, because I don't think, you know, we can see that kind of being taken care of by, like, the neighbors and community members. And although we think that it's, it's a national thing, it is in our state too, like, high school students are being targeted to be deported. Recently, there are like eight immigrant brokers just taken out of the farm, like, buried. So it is getting closer and closer to our community, unfortunately, and I feel that all the people who are original to me, I need to do something about it. So I am looking into what we can do as a local community, and because I'm on the board of the Central Vermont Reserve Center Network, we do workshops at the state level, so I am planning to talk to them and learn more from them what we can do locally. And again, I just wanna make it all the community members and neighbors who reach out to me and ask how I feel. And, like, this is how I feel. I told my husband this morning, oh, let's have a trip to Montreal, right? Because we haven't been there since COVID, and my husband said, you cannot be able to come back. That's how I feel. So, thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn. Jim?
I just would like to say that Carrie and I are looking forward to seeing any of you residents come at Saturday at 12 at the Kellon Hubbard Library in the Hayes Room, right? So, looking forward to having you come by and talk to us.
So. Carrie. Adrian.
For all to stay at this weekend is Mudfest here in Montpelier. We've been working very hard to put together this weekend as an economic driver for Montpelier, and so you'll be at the library on Saturday, stop by and say hi, I'll get the Montpelier Alive tent all there on Saturday, but just so everyone knows, you can go to montpelieralive.com/mudfest Saturday, I'm just gonna read a couple of the highlights. There'll be the Muddy Onion on Saturday, which is the bike race, it's gonna rain, so it'll be super muddy, super hot, like, totally come out and get really, really dirty. There will also be the Gearmakers Festival, which is taking up School Street, so there's a whole lot of local businesses and goods and apparel, so all your favorite clothes, they're gonna be there, selling their stuff on School Street on Saturday from 11:00 to 4:00. North Branch Nature Center is gonna have information from about nature hikes, 10:30 to 11:30 on, at Main Street at the library. Faircom Books is gonna have a mud-themed storytime from 11:00 to 12:30 on Saturday. And Sunday, this is gonna be super fun, it's the first time we're doing this in Montpelier, the Mucker Mud Run hosted by the Greenmount Community Fitness, they give out tough mudders, cartons, we're bringing that to Montpelier. You're gonna run through Hubbard Park, enjoy the nature, get really dirty, get really physical. On the State House lawn, they're gonna have a free mini-mucker designed for kids 10 and under, that is an obstacle course race, get really muddy and dirty, that's the whole point, you can be physically active. And then Saturday, they give the, the Department of Public Works is gonna hold a pit party from 10:00 to 12:00 to learn all about the Department of Public Works. We're gonna have a family-friendly floor-over excavation site, really highlighting the construction in Montpelier, and you can see all the machines up close. So, really big weekend in Montpelier, I hope you all come out and support both all the businesses, the restaurants, and all these really fun activities.
Thanks, Adrian. Mayor's report, I don't have very much to say, except that it's sort of along the lines of what Palin was saying, we have seen in our names by, actions taken by the national government that are hateful, discriminatory, and illegal, and we all need to be aware of that and to do whatever we can to, to resist it. And I don't see it getting better for a while. City clerks report? City managers report?
Only one item, just to mention that we are working on reviewing the meetings, so we've been a little bit delayed, but have made good progress to date and are planning to meet next week to kind of review, you know, some of the, we're looking at a tiered structure, and so there is an update in the City Managers Weekly, and we'll keep kind of publishing it there, but I just wanted to say thanks to Palin and Ben for jumping in on that, and our willingness to wait while we get it done, so, thanks.
Thanks, Kelly. And that is it, 11:03, and we are adjourned.